Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 20th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency. And now join me as we reaffirm our allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for what we know as the St. Andrews property or Bellafield. The applicants are seeking approval to create a three-lot subdivision, one for the previously approved hotel, one for the previously approved wastewater treatment facility, the remainder being the parent lot. Megan, a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Applicants. Anything new you want to add? In the interim, I guess I'll go ahead and add that the town board enthusiastically passed the authorization for the open development area, which will then allow us to, at some point, issue building permits on private roads. We have a resolution prepared for tonight. One question we had was, are you applying still for two DOT work permits or just the one? In an offline meeting, it seemed like you might apply for two.
So, yeah, yeah, so we're applying for a New York City DOT perm 33, temporary access on the Northern Drive only right now?
Oh.
I thought Chris said he put in both.
Yeah, then the issue wanted it at times. So when we get through that work, if we don't have the permanent DOC, we'll apply for temporary on.
Okay. Thank you.
If they don't have permanent at that time, it will...
And then, I had a question. I know Ms. Ventile reworked some of the language from the draft resolution. The hotel invitees instead of pedestrian access easement confused me. I think that's how you described it.
We weren't sure what you were aiming at when you were talking about easements for pedestrian activity, because we have an entire pedestrian system throughout the project. And if you are going to require actual easements for all of those accesses, it's just going to be very confusing, because we're going to have pedestrian easements going over other easements. So I thought this was something that you were intending for guests of the hotel, which are...
No, all the public. If a student at the CIA sees an advertisement for a job at the hotel, they would need to access other parcels to go through. In other words, we, this is the first time the board will be approving, has approved a site plan that involves public, or private roads. So we weren't sure how to handle, to make it certain that, since these are going to be parceled off lots and sold, that no owner can subsequently say, no, no one can walk across my site. And I don't know how to do that without doing pedestrian easements. And I know that sounds ridiculous, that we'd have to do all those easements across, but how else do you solve that if you're going to have? Thank you. Why would we say "dar"?
Well, that's a big improvement.
I loved it. I loved it before. You can't read it.
Well, I think it's been part of the approvals from the very beginning, that there was an extensive public network of passageways through the site. And I think that's an implicit part of the approvals, which incorporate all of the conditions of the seeker findings and the, and the other interim approvals that have taken place. We certainly don't have any objection to notes on the plant, the site plan and the subdivision plot that would reaffirm that.
I would certainly concur. I just want to make certain that there's, we preclude the possibility of, again, let's say that someone buys a lot that has a building on it that's retail and has a quarrel with the owner of the site overall, refusing to pay HOA fees, something, and says, okay, no one can cross my land. How do we prevent that? Procluded permanently.
Well, I think that's why I've suggested changing the resolution to say that the assurance of pedestrian passage be assured by notes or documents, as the case may be, to allow the planning board attorney to explore what is the appropriate methodology for that. I assure you that the, that the developer of the site has no intention of allowing individual lot owners to build up barriers to prevent the implementation of the overall development.
I can certainly see that. Victoria?
So I think we're all rowing in the right direction, in the same direction.
There's also a, the pedestrian path from the bus station to the hotel.
Right.
Where there, we're looking for an easement there to allow...
Could you please speak into the microphone? I can't hear you today. There's, the air conditioning's running.
I was noting that there's supposed to be a pedestrian path from the bus stop to the hotel.
A rough trail.
A rough, a rough trail.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's called out on the site plan, and we're affirming our commitment to have that. And I think we can work out what the appropriate documentation is without, we don't want to by having, let's say, 785 pedestrian easements on the plan imply that anything that doesn't have a specific easement is not part of the overall public pedestrian plan. So I think we can work that out either by means of declaration or notes or a combination thereof. All of these, the easement, the rough trail is already shown on the plan. It's been part of the...
It's shown on the site plan, but right now we're approving a subdivision. So if that lot, if your site plan doesn't get built out, you have a lot, I mean, I guess the lot has to be developed consistent with the subdivision, with the site plan.
Right, and that was something that you added to the resolution. So I think we're getting to kind of belts and suspenders at this point.
Yeah, the issue with the...
To which we have no objection.
The issue with the rough trail, it's going to be done in the field. You know, we don't know exactly how it's going to be planned.
I know. Which is why for easement purposes, it'd be very difficult to describe it in terms of meets and bounds, because you haven't figured out the meets and bounds yet.
Unless we did an area.
Unless we did an area. But are you, how do we proceed this evening, assuming the board wants to, without knowing that this still needs to be worked out into the future? If that's what it sounds like, through either notes or means of declaration, something?
So you could go ahead and approve the resolution, and we can amend the conditions once we work out what the appropriate method, legal method for maintaining pedestrian rights is, just as we're doing for the site plan. Or you can, what else could we do? We could move it...
And when would we amend it?
We, we could amend it in a month, in two months.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we just, why wouldn't we just work this through before we pass the resolution, so that it is resolved?
Could I just make a suggestion? The, the additions to the language that I proposed this afternoon were the documentation that pedestrians, and we can broaden the language here, would have pedestrian access over the path and sidewalk system on Lot 1 by note or other documentation, then we could add satisfactory to the planning board attorney. In fact, it already says, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney and revision of the subdivision plat to depict such access. So I think that allows the same type of discretion for the town attorney's review as you've allowed in many other situations.
I didn't see that, that change. What I saw is referred to hotel invitees rather than pedestrians, I think. Would this be condition 11?
Yes, I mean, this is, this would be to address the rough plan...
Can you read it again?
Documentation, well, this is the same language I sent to you this afternoon that I'm just...
It's been through so many revisions. I'm asking you to read it.
I don't have the exact hour and moment of the...
That's okay.
Documentation of pedestrian access in accordance with the approved concept plan and seeker findings by note or other documentation, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney, and revision of the subdivision plat to depict such access.
Okay, that's, that wording works for me, because it, it allows us to continue the conversation and ensure that we're satisfied.
And it will, ensures a revision of the subdivision plat, should it be necessary. Okay.
Okay. I have that resolution. And I didn't write that down, because I was waiting to see if our attorney was agreeing to it. So I started with documentation.
Of pedestrian access in accordance with the approved...
Of pedestrian access?
Of pedestrian access in accordance with the approved concept plan.
Hold on. In accordance...
The approved, oh, like, concept plan.
Okay.
And seeker findings. Victoria, do you want to take over? I missed the next sentence.
By note or other documents acceptable...
Hold on. Of the documents within us?
Documentation.
Documentation.
Oh, documentation.
Subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney, comma.
I am not a secretary.
Just, hold on.
You can just circle the clause.
More if you just give her yours and make a copy of it.
I've done this before. It's already in, it's already in this condition.
So I don't have to write it?
You have to write, you have to write the first part, but not that section, and then you have to conclude it by saying...
And revision of the subdivision plat... To depict such access.
To depict such access.
After plat comes what?
To depict such...
To depict?
Sorry. To depict such access.
Okay, we're not ready to read the resolution yet, thank heavens. That clears up my issues. That clears up my issues. From this back and forth, I was chained to my desk and computer for five hours with revisions, resolutions. They can tell you, because Victoria was right there along with me, as were Liz and Pete. So, anything else you guys would like to add? Comments from consultants?
We hope not at this point.
Comments from consultants? Ms. Axelson?
No.
Mrs. Tetero?
No.
Ms. Polidaro?
No.
Comments from the board? Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Anything from my right?
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being no one present, Megan, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Diane, good luck with this lengthy resolution.
I would made a terrible secretary. Resolution granting conditional preliminary and final plat approval for the N. Bellfield subdivision, June 20th, 2018 resolution. 2018-11A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby waives all subdivision standards and requirements that duplicate requests for information previously submitted by the applicant and its approved site plan. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants preliminary and final plat approval to the subdivision plat, subject to the following conditions. Payment of all outstanding fees and escrow for town consultants. Conceptual approval by Dutchess County Department of Public Works for the proposed curb cuts on West Dorsey Lane.
How did this get through again?
I don't know.
Please remove Dutchess County Department of Public Works. It's supposed to be for the Town of Hyde Park Highway Superintendent.
Okay.
I think, because we were all marking up different versions.
For the...
It's in someone's file folder as the last draft.
I corrected that five times today. This doesn't seem fair.
Town of Hyde Park Highway Superintendent.
Highway Superintendent.
Okay. I resent number two. I will start number two again. The conceptual approval of the Town of Hyde Park, by the Town of Hyde Park's Highway Superintendent for the proposed curb cut on West Dorsey Lane. Revision of the subdivision plat to depict the meets and bounds of every existing and proposed easement, including the proposed easement to the Department of Transportation on the South Drive. Four, submission of emergency access easement and maintenance agreement over Lot 1 in favor of Lot 2, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Five, submission of access easement 2 over Lot 1 in favor of Lot 3, and maintenance agreement, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Six, submission of access easement 1 over Lot 1 in favor of, of Lot 2, and maintenance agreement, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Seven, submission of utility easement 1 over Lot 1 in favor of Lots 2 and 3, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Eight, submission of utility easements 2 over Lot 1 in favor of Lots 2 and 3, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Nine, submission of a declaration of restrictions controlling activities in the designated Walton-Roosevelt compound, subject to approval in the form and substance by the planning board attorney. Submission of a drainage easement over Lot 1 in favor of Lot 2, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. This is where you're going to have to bear with me, guys. Documentation of pedestrian access in accordance with the approval concept plan and seeker findings by note and other documentation, subject to approval in form and substance by the planning board attorney. Twelve...
And revision of the subdivision plat to depict such access?
Sorry, and revision of subdivision plat to depict such access. Twelve, revision of subdivision plat to include the following notation. All development on lots created by the subdivision plat shall be consistent with the site plan by, for sub-phase 1A approved by the planning board, as may be amended from time to time. Thirteen, provide a worksheet to show that the proposed lot layout and any temporary or permanent easements would encompass the extent of development, including rating and limits of disturbance. Fourteen, revision of subdivision plat to include a bulk table, consistent with that shown on the approved site plan for sub-phase 1A with columns for the hotel and wastewater treatment plant WWTP lots. Fifteen, revision of the subdivision plat to add engineers and surveyors' signatures and seals on all plan sheets. Sixteen, revision of the subdivision plat to identify property owners within 200 feet of the site across West Dorsey Lane. Seventeen, revision of the subdivision plat to identify any existing property boundary monuments, and to include proposed monuments at the corner of Lots 2 and 3. Be it further resolved that no other building permits for Lot 2 and 3 may be authorized by the zoning administrator, absent proof that all deeds, easements, and restrictive covenances required by the site plan and subdivision resolutions have been duly recorded and the Dutch, with the Dutchess County Clerk. Be it further resolved that no building permits for Lots 2 and 3 may be authorized by the zoning administrator unless the access road providing access to the lot proposed for development has been completed up to a, to a binder course in accordance with the road profile standard set forth by the ODA approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do you want a copy of, we'll send you one.
I thought you had a question. Did you want on number 13?
No, 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 I was fine with it. I just didn't have a copy that had those additional conditions, but I don't have any objection to it.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Just send me the final. Thank you very much. We appreciate your courtesy.
Thank you.
Well, it would happen actually now, I don't...
I can't hear you.
Are we doing any other resolution on this project tonight?
After the public hearings.
Okay.
We're going to discuss it. The next item on the agenda is another public, continued public hearing for Jeffrey Groves Estates. As a reminder, this is a re-subdivision, as well as site plan approval request. Location is 39-41 North Cross Road. This was approved originally for 38 townhomes, nine single-family homes the applicants have proposed, eliminating the nine single-family home lots for 12 new sub, new townhomes, so that the eastern or right-hand side of the project would reflect the left or west side of the project. And we had a new submission that was really good, that we received last time, since the last meeting.
I should...
I think you did a very good job, Mr. Watts.
Thank you.
Would you like to, should I turn the floor over to you, so you can go through the changes? Oh, Megan, a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Do you want to give me a little bit of a...
I didn't turn on.
Hello? I don't know if everyone can hear me here. Hello?
Chanson.
It is?
I didn't turn on.
Hello?
I can just sit.
Pick that thing up.
You can probably walk with that one.
Yeah.
It's not a battery, man.
Yeah, that...
Signal.
This is slightly unusual. Again, Jeffrey Groves, North Cross Road in Hyde Park. This was the previously approved subdivision, including 38 townhouses on Blair Road, and there were nine residential... Nine residential lots on Daniel's Way. The applicant is re-subdividing the nine residential lots in this area to 12 townhouses to match the pre-approved 38. We've gone through and tried to renew as many things as we needed to. The wetland notes have been updated as requested for Blandings turtles and Indiana bats and long-eared bats. The plan will reduce the disturbance significantly. These were all different residential homes that we no longer building. There'll be no longer any common driveways crossing any eas, any wetlands. Again, townhouses, 12?
Townhouses.
Hello? Okay.
Yes.
12 townhouses total, two separate buildings, six units in each building. Each will have direct access to Daniel's Way. Daniel's Way is not changing. They will continue to be served by the proposed water treatment plant and the public water. Public water will be brought up from North Mountain Road along North Cross. The landscaping, again, we have continued to provide trees along the street, alternating in a zigzag pattern. It will give coverage to most everybody. The trees are in between the buildings. Utilities do not interfere with the root systems. We're providing two lamp posts, lamp post luminaries, one in the visitor parking area, also where the pump station is, and we will provide one by the mailboxes right between the two buildings, equal opportunity for walking for anybody in the development. We will try to shield the pump station with some, with some trees. We will also provide some trees between the two buildings, so that they kind of, kind of breaks it up a little more, so I don't have one big, long, open space. This is a rendering of the proposed townhouses. It's very close to what we are proposing, some of the elevations a little bit. These are going to be up higher than the road. I'm not sure if the colors, if we're still...
Regarding the colors, so we, we got your recommendations, and, you know, they're more in the gray family than in the beige family, which is okay, you know? But I think if you were, if I understood the suggestion, it was like to alternate or something, I forget the words that were used. I'm not as fond of having multiple colors, so...
And that's fine.
You know, so if it's the grays you prefer to the beige and creams, that's fine. We, you know, we got the watch.
I think we were also looking, were you happy with it? Or did it not matter to you?
No. I mean, I liked it.
Yeah.
We liked that. That's lovely. I mean, and it's light, and I, I thought the gray was a little bit darker and...
Too dark.
You know, so it might, you know, but I'm colorblind.
It was a suggestion? It was food for thought?
So, you know, so I'll leave that to the board's discretion. I thought this was lovely. The gray is lovely, too.
Thank you.
The gray is more millennial, just want you to know. They love millennial, love gray.
And pink.
And then this is the actual elevation that you presented with the meeting set.
This is the actual elevation. Each building will be slightly different in terms of a group of building, maybe a couple feet offset, just to accommodate the existing topography. They will be set back, the front facade will be set back four feet, just so that, it does break this up, so you don't have one big building, but, so this is just a generic to represent the general idea for both townhouse units. Again, both will be served by the proposed wastewater treatment plant, which will be right between Blair's Road and Daniel's Way. It's a newer, it's a newer design. It consolidates some of the, some of the infrastructure. They will no longer be housed in a building. They'll be in ground. You will not see them. There may be some round covers, sort of speaking of ground, they'll, you won't, you won't really see them from the road or anywhere else. The wastewater treatment plant building, it's going to be eye-peeling, in our opinion. It will not detract at all from the, what we're proposing here, or anybody else's point of view, our hope, anyone else's.
We're going to maintain the similar exterior that we had on the townhouses.
It looks, it looks like a townhouse.
So it looks like a townhouse.
It's got a garage door on it.
We like it to be, you know, so, you know, the, the perception that was here, and it's like, oh, I'm afraid of a sewer treatment plant, but it really is not going to stick out like that. And if we have to put some evergreens to shield it further, that's fine.
Thank you.
I leave that to the discretion of the board as well.
That was as previously approved, and we're continuing that, that commitment, and it is on the plan set that if, after this is built, if you, if you feel that we do need something more between North Cross Road and the built-in infrastructure, we more than willing to accommodate that. We'd like to wait for that to be done after it's built, so you can see, you know where you need it, and, and if that's even required.
Thank you. So, I'm going to start with my comments first, before I can get over to the consultants, one of which came up at the agenda meeting. These are rentals right now, but if you, down the line, if you sell them, because under our code, multifamily requires site plan approval. If someone wanted to put up a fence or a shed, anything that required a building permit, they'd have to come back for site plan approval, each individual owner. So the way we solved this for the enclave, which you sat through that, too, was we had them put on typical fences, typical sheds, typical whatever. That way, we pre-approve, if anybody wants to add, say, a backyard fence or something, we could pre-approve it. Either that, or we'd have to have a note on the site plan saying that anything else that changes would require site plan approval by the planning board. So it's up to you, just to consider.
Well, so there would be in the resolution...
No, it's, you would show it on, on the plans. You would have just like, like a typical detail.
Typical, okay. Like another, another detail sheet.
Yeah, it's just a little detail sheet to show fences, sheds. I couldn't think of anything else.
Good idea.
Well, again, it's what we did with the enclave. Then on sheet LL 101, the pole is shown to be 12 feet high. This is for the lighting fixture detail. Within the top, the luminaries shows 33 inches of height, and then the total light fixture with pole and luminary is shown at 13 feet, which I believe if you add those up would be 15, a little over 15 feet.
I will change that to 12 feet. I misunderstood. When we went through and we answered a comment...
It's 12, it's 12 to where the...
The top of the luminary.
Yes, you got it.
From the final grade, yes.
Yes, got it.
I will change that. I had that originally, and then my zest to get in...
It's okay.
Worthwhile detail in there.
This is a picky yune.
Yes.
Note 7 on the same sheet LL 1 refers to sheet LL 501, when the next sheet is CS 501, so you should be, should be consistent. And also, I believe, there's not... And also, I believe, zoning administrator Moss would want, you have all the detail for the wall mount lights for the buildings. I think she's going to want to see them on the elevation, so just have the architect append where the lights are going to go. That's all I have. Ms. Axelson, any comments?
This stuff doesn't want to move. Hang on a second here. There we go. It said excavate. So, a lot of good plan revisions. We did issue a comment memo June 19th with the refinements that we'd like to see. Then we did some back and forth today with emails and draft resolutions. And when I did my edits, I put in a whole mess of site plan type conditions. Because the way I look at this thing, between subdivision and site plan, everything kind of goes hand in hand for the whole project. So Michael and I had this discussion. And I actually don't know what the current resolution is. So, it doesn't matter, in any case. So I had a little sort of intellectual issue with bifurcating subdivision and site plan, because of course, I want the lots and other things to work out well for whatever is going to be developed thereon. And the plat itself doesn't have a whole lot of detail. And the reason that we never asked for those details is because we've been reviewing site plans side by side. So, in my mind, why would I ask you to put everything that we've already had you put on the site plan also onto the subdivision drawings? So, little confusion there. One way to handle this would be, you have our comments on site plan. And the more we can clear those up, the better. Offline consultation as needed. And otherwise, I suppose, the board could consider a possible resolution tonight on the subdivision plat, but I might or might not need to tell you which things are site planned. And when I looked through that list, I had a little trouble with it again, but that's my issue. So.
So to further detail this, as some people know, I had a little southern hissy fit this afternoon. Applications that reach us, that reach all of us up here, are supposed to be determined, quote unquote, administratively complete by the zoning administrator. Apparently, that did not happen, because I got an email at 4:30 today detailing a list of information that was supposed to be per her on the subdivision plat. I was proceeding under the assumption, since it reached us, that this sort of agreement had been, had happened somehow, that information didn't need to be duplicated. But in Tad's mind, in zoning administrator Moss's mind, the approved subdivision, the approved site plan don't live together, quote unquote, when they're filed. So she'd like to see everything on each bit of information. So we'll take care of the process in the future. In the meantime, I've altered the resolution to detail, to add that that's, all those things must be added. But to go back to the enclave, which is where we had a similar situation, where we conducted simultaneous public hearings on both subdivision and site plan. We did not, we did bifurcate them, because some of the subdivision was ready to go before the site plan, and the subdivision needed to be filed before the site plan could as well. In this case, it's the same thing. You'll have to file the subdivision plat with the clerk before we can approve the site plan, because we're approving new lots as part of the site plan. So they do have to be somewhat separated. So, we revised the resolution accordingly. Mr. Watts was generous and kind, but I'm going to make certain this doesn't happen again, because if the purpose of rushing these to the planning board is to not cause delay, then all it does is cause delay later on, when they're told, six months later, you didn't have enough information in your application initially. So, I will take care of this, I assure you, and I'll take the blame. I should have inquired, since we got this, and it was a very cursory subdivision, was that okay to proceed with Ms. Moss? But like I said, I assume since she's the gatekeeper, that it had already been checked off. So, with apologies on that one. Anything else, Ms. Axelson? Mr. Zataro, any comments?
Only that, we'll need a little bit more time. We didn't get a chance to look at the amended stormwater pollution prevention plan, so, you know, we'll do that. And then, I just need to take a little bit more time with the grading and the utilities. But, I mean, like, initial view, it looks like it's in pretty good shape. But, you know, again, now things are, you know, a little busier now before, you know, the board. It does take a little bit more time for some of these larger projects, so. But we'll get there. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Patero?
We have a resolution prepared for conditional preliminary plat approval. This would just allow the applicant to move forward to a final plat. The resolution has a number of conditions, some of which could be carried over to final plat, and some of which are a roadmap for what needs to be submitted on the final plat. When the applicant came in the first time, they paid a rec fee for 47 lots, and because they're creating three new residential lots, we have findings in here for the board supporting a rec fee for the three new residential lots as well.
Thank you. Comments? Let me start to the right. Ms. DiNapoli?
I wanted to thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you for listening, and it's, I look forward to seeing this being developed. Sorry.
Mr. Oliver?
I'll second my colleagues' comments, and thank you for, you know, working with us, and hopefully we'll see some more development going on in the town. Thank you.
Any comments on color, Chris? Gray versus cream?
I'm open either way. I'm fine.
Ms. Dexter?
I apologize again, on behalf of the town, that you would have to, at the last minute, have to accommodate, but I do appreciate that you understand how these things do sometimes happen. And looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Any comments on color?
No.
Since it's board discretion?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Pickett?
I want to thank you for that. I like the layout, like the design, the, all the work and edits and the things you've put into it, really appreciate, and I think you've been very accommodating, so I look forward to getting this done, and I'm either or in colors.
Ms. Weiser?
I would like to support Ms. DiNapoli in her, her recommendation of color. I do think that rather than the beige and cream, a combination of light and blue, light or dark gray would give the buildings a little bit more distinction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Nope.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none making a motion?
I have one more question.
Yes.
Can you just confirm that you're proposing to put your snow at the edge of the town road, and that you won't have any snow easements?
As we are not, have not changed Daniel's Way, there was no, to my knowledge, any kind of easements required or filed in the original subdivision. We're not proposing to add any easements if they're not necessary.
So, I've seen, I went back and forth between the memos, and there was a question about whether snow easements would be required, and I thought your response was that they weren't needed, so I just want to clarify that.
My understanding is that at the end of the hammerhead, there is this, like, this is about 30 feet.
Is that part of the right of way?
That, yes, that goes all the way up to the stone wall.
Okay.
It extends.
I think that was the attraction to some degree of the shape of the road.
It is.
You know, you just, they come in, they plow it, they push it right away.
I just wanted to.
Right, that's, that's fine. I.
We can start applying that, just notice that.
Okay.
So, we're prepared to take action tonight, but we need to continue the public hearing, pending some further reviews, responses to the new Morse Associates memo?
For the site plan.
On the site plan.
For site plan. But we're also, we, we have not done final subdivision approval. This is just preliminary.
It's just preliminary.
So we're.
We'd close the public hearing on preliminary subdivision.
Adjourn the public hearing on site plan.
And there's not another public hearing on final plat needed unless they make material changes to the plat.
Correct, which they're not really, I don't think going to, because the basic layout's been set since day one, it seems like. We've all agreed that this is a better, more compact design, less disturbance to an sensitive area in terms of plant, et cetera. Okay. Make it a motion to close the public hearing on a preliminary subdivision.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make it a motion to adjourn the public hearing for site plan to July the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
I do.
May I just address certain language in the resolution? So, I don't know how significant this is, but on the first page, the third where, whereas, it says a 47-lot townhouse development, and in fact, it's townhouse and single-family lot development. So I don't know that that's, you know, I don't, you know, it's clear later on. What? So in the third whereas, it reads, "The planning board granted site plan and subdivision approval for a previous iteration of the project, a 47-lot townhouse development." And it wasn't all townhouse.
Townhouse and single-family.
So, yeah, and single-family development, lot development. The other, and so, and then I also just want to, you know, confirm with Victoria, because I was going to talk to her about it, but I appreciate that the board is making it very clear what the easements are, which makes my life a lot easier, because I already have descriptions, so I'll be able to do that, like, promptly. I was really waiting for, you know, the board to act before we gave you the legal documentation. Finally, you have on the last page, under, before a building permit is issued, acceptance of the HOA by the Attorney General.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what you mean by that, because we had filed, and of course, I'm willing to, we're going to amend it anyway, to change the description of the actual.
Right, you're going to have to update it to, for the new lot configuration.
But by acceptance, you don't mean then they're going to review it for sales, are they, do you mean? Because that's a significant and very long process, I understand, with the Attorney General. Whereas filing it is there on notice, you know, they know what we're doing. And I do have an HOA formed and filed, but I didn't intend on going through the approval process with it, or acceptance. And I'm not sure what acceptance means.
Well, to my understanding, we've been told that the AG does not approve, that they merely accept it, which is a sort of tacit approval, that it meets all their standards.
Well, that's a six-month process, is what I'm understanding.
And in this instance, you're not offering these for sale, anyway. You will be the, you'll be the only HOA member, as I understand it.
Well, I understand, but nonetheless, if I have to submit an HOA for acceptance by the AG, I've defeated that purpose.
Well, you have to do that.
You know, I just don't understand if, what, you know, I don't want to delay six months to get a building permit. My intention is to build the roads and the first building, whatever building I choose, immediately.
Your first building will be the wastewater treatment facility.
Right. But I mean, yes, that's, yes. But I mean, I intended to actually finish a building while I'm putting in the roads and all the infrastructure.
So this only applies to Daniel's Way? It doesn't apply to your existing subdivision? If that makes a difference to you?
Well, I don't know.
Daniel's Way is.
What do you mean by acceptance?
So, approval.
Yeah, I got a problem with that.
How are we going to resolve that? Because this is a standard for us when there's an HOA, that we require it to be accepted by the Attorney General's office.
It is a standard. And we pushed it off to building permit, so that you could do all the site work ahead of time.
Very kind, but I would like to start the buildings as well.
Well, what do you, what's your proposal?
CO.
And what if, what if the Attorney General doesn't accept it, or approve it?
I don't know. I guess I won't have an HOA. I don't know. I don't know what to find out. I'm going to own it as rentals, so, you know. I think we're overly complicating a process that I intend, you know, we, we're building 300 units in another place. They're all rentals, and I intend to do that here. You need rentals up here.
We're not disagreeing, but remember, we're planning for the future. If you lose the site and somebody else picks it up and say, tax parcel, whatever, you create individual lots. Your 300 rentals over there in the town of Poughkeepsie are stacked up, and they're not individual lots. You create individual lots here because the first proposal was to sell these individually. So, back when you were just a financial partner. So we're just trying to make certain that, again, for the future, planning ahead, if you lose control of it somehow and someone starts selling it, what, what's the mechanism to?
All right, so how do they live there without a CO?
Well, I'm okay with it being issuance of a CO, but.
I mean, the developer would be taking the risk
Mm-hmm.
That he would build these units, and then something would come up, and he wouldn't be able to, to sell them, although he is proposing to rent them.
I mean, the initial requirement was.
But the CO, but the CO, the CO will apply to, apply to the unit, whether it's going to be, when it's going to be rented or sold, right? I mean.
Yes.
Right, Lou?
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's two separate issues. Selling or living. Living is a CO, period. Doesn't matter what type of.
And we don't regulate ownership up here. That's not part of the planning board's purview.
I understand, but that's my point. My point is, is that I'm going to take a process, and, you know, that's going to be, at this point, acceptance, which I don't think was the original consideration. And I respect that you, there's been a lot of water under the bridge, and a lot of education about getting burned, and the town has gotten smarter and more protective of itself. I got all that, and I accept all that. My point is, is that I can't get anybody to live there without the Attorney General. To me, that's, that's the ultimate shield, you know? I can, I can build all I want, take as big a risk as I want, spend all the money building those things. If I can't get anybody to live there, you know, so, talk about risk.
Right, but you really think that six months, you'll be, you'll have built out Blair Road and Daniel's Way?
You bet. At least one of them.
From now?
From the day you give me an approval.
When it starts.
That's right. Have you seen what we're doing?
You mean the day, you mean the day that I signed the plat?
You got it.
Signed the plat and the site plan, not the day that you give the approval.
Let me ask you a question about that. So, I, I'm to, I'm to understand that we have to have our subdivision filed first. Okay. And, you know, in the revised form, and then, so Brian is going to work on that. So now, here we are, and we have what will hopefully be the final subdivision drawings, you know, which I believe the original ones were five. I assume that'll remain the same five, but, you know, revised. So, okay, so now, here I am. So is that, so that could conceivably happen at the next public hearing? Is that how that works? Because don't you get authorized to sign, anyway? I mean, whenever that day.
It depends, it depends, so there was information needed on both the subdivision plat and the site plan.
Yeah, we understand, we see that.
So if you get that in, and the board reviews it, and it's sufficient, it, it could conceivably be granted in July.
So, my, you know, I'm not positive, but I believe your next meeting or?
July 18th.
July 18th. And so in, so for that, in order to be, you know, you know, in, assuming that there's a prompt review, you would, we'd have to get it in by July 3rd? Is that the right date? Something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Yes.
So Brian is telling me he's going to try and do that. And Brian's a man of his word, and if he can't, then we're not going to beat him up, we promise. So, so we're going to try, you know, so we're going to try and get it in, and so hopefully, that if that first step is that you need an approved subdivision authorized to be signed by the chair, well, then let's, we're going to try and do that in, for the next meeting, with all of the additional information that we understand needs to be on it.
Mr. Watts did an excellent job of responding to the first Morse Associates memo.
Brian has done an excellent job.
He was very thorough.
Period.
So, the next memo, the most recent memo that Liz sent out is much shorter. You've heard my comments about some things that need to be changed along through there.
Brian's, Brian's efforts in this project has probably gotten his firm a much bigger project. So he's been doing a great job. So we are pleased with Brian, as well as M.A. Day.
Excellent.
As long as we're talking here, as long as I open my mouth, I want to thank the board, because the board has been very hospitable, and extremely, and as well as the consultants, you've been very, you react, you know, it's really very good, and so, the board and these people at this table are great, and I have not, you know, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. We like hearing accolades. Make note of that, everybody in the audience, just teasing. So I believe what we would do is amend the resolution to say, be it further resolved, that should final approval be obtained, the following shall be required prior to issuance of a CO, and that would be acceptance of the HOA by the Attorney General. Correct?
Yeah, except I put, prior to authorization of a CO by the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Because she authorizes it. Because she authorizes it.
Right, because I'd issue.
Thank you.
So, and then that item two is deleted.
Can you read my, my hand scratch? I'll read it with you when you get there. I'll read it with you when you get there.
Two-part nominee.
It's all yours?
All mine, okay. Resolution to grant conditional preliminary plat approval, Jeffrey Grove Estates, June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, resolution twenty eighteen dash oh four B. Whereas, 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 and we made the edits to number three, and single-family lot, for correction. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that a proper case exists for requiring parks or recreation land to be suitably located on the plat, but that such land cannot be properly located within the plat, and that the recreation fee for three new residential lots shall be paid to the town recreation fund. Be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants preliminary plat approval to subdivision plat subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees, including the recreation fee and escrow for the town's consultants. Two, Department of Health approval for methods of water supply and sewage disposal, disposal. Three, Dutchess County Department of Public Works conceptual approval of the curb cut for Daniel's Way. Four, posting of a performance guarantee or other surety for completion of the sewage treatment plant in an amount approved by the Planning Board and town engineer, and in form, substance, and manner of execution acceptable to the town board and attorney to the town. Number five, confirmation that the Sewer Works Corporation is still in full force and effect and in good standing, and holds clear title to the existing and proposed sewer lot. Six, approval by the Planning Board Attorney and Attorney to the town as to the form of entity to own the common area, such as a homeowner's association or condominium association, quotes, HOA, which shall be responsible for the maintenance of the roadway, sidewalks, drainage, drainage easements, and the guest parking spaces of the subdivision. Seven, approval by the Attorney of the town of an offer of session and deed with related recording documents for the proposed town roads and drainage easements, together with proof by a title company certified to do business in the state of New York, and that the owner has clear, unencumbered title to all land subject to the offer of session. Eight, approval by the Planning Board Attorney and Attorney to the town of a deed restriction over the open space area limiting its uses pursuant to section ninety-six dash E three of the subdivision law and providing town, providing the town with right, but not the obligation to enforce the deed restriction. Number nine, approval by the Planning Board Attorney and Attorney of the town of an easement to the Sewer Works Corporation for mains in the roadway. Ten, approval by the Planning Board Attorney and Attorney to the town of a blanket cross-access easement for grading across residential lots. Eleven, posting of a maintenance guarantee or other surety for maintenance of the sewage treatment plant in an amount approved by the Planning Board and town engineer, and in form, substance, and manner of execution acceptable to the town board and attorney to the town. Twelve, revision of the subdivision plat to contain lot numbers for identification purposes. Thirteen, approval by the Planning Board Attorney of the stormwater management easements, pond maintenance easements, parking easements, and utility easements, and revision of the plat to include limits and bounds and descriptions of each easement area. Fourteen, revision of the plat to include all the required information for the preliminary plat under the town's zoning code as detailed in an email from the town zoning administrator dated June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and attached hereto. Be it further resolved that should final approval be obtained, the following plat shall be required prior to issuance of a building permit on any lot on the subdivision plat. One. Yep, okay. One, evidence that all deeds, easements, restrictive covenants, and offers of the session have been duly recorded with the Dutchess County Clerk.
Be it further resolved that, shall final approval be obtained, the following shall be required prior to the authorization of a CO by the zoning administrator, one acceptance of the HOA by the Attorney General.
Be it further resolved that should final approval be obtained, as a condition of the town accepting dedication of the road shown on the final subdivision plat, the applicant shall provide, at its own cost, the town with a title insurance policy. Excuse me. Be it further resolved that the following must be...
I assume that the, the amount of the policy is irrelevant, or just, I, I mean, I think the last time we gave a fifty thousand dollar policy.
You know, we can work that out for final...
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
And it depends on when it is that you're dedicating, and that's up to the town attorney and the town board.
Right, right, okay, thank you, sorry.
Be it further resolved that the following must be satisfied as a condition of the town accepting dedication of the road shown on the final subdivision plat. A, formation of a sidewalk maintenance district for sidewalks on Daniel's Way and Blair Road, or B, evidence that the town denied a valid petition for formation of a sidewalk district, and the site plan includes a note requiring the applicant or an HOA to maintain the sidewalks, or C, evidence of adoption of a sidewalks maintenance law by the town of Hyde Park, which requires the adjacent property owners to maintain the sidewalks, and D, formation of a drainage district to maintain the required stormwater practices for Daniel's Way and Blair Road, or evidence that the town denied a valid petition for formation of a drainage district. If the drainage, drainage district is not formed, approval by the Planning Board Attorney, yeah, of a stormwater maintenance agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'm going to introduce a quick discussion topic here. The town board has drafted a law regarding maintenance of sidewalks. Ms. Paul Doro and I have both seen it. The law, the town board is waiting for the law to, to adopt the law, because it refers to specific roads. The roads don't exist yet, except on subdivision plats, so I'm trying to figure out how they can meet their condition. They would have to file a subdivision plat in order for the town to pass the law.
Right, so the condition is post-filing of the plat.
Right.
It's before the town accepts the roads for dedication.
So, that's how we've neatly organized this, okay. Thank you. Any further questions? On favor?
Aye.
A lot of conditions, but they're mostly legal for you. Well, one, a lot of information to be added to the subdivision plat.
Given that most of it's been on the site plan, and we're planning on doing a lot of co-mingling of...
It's just a matter of transferring it over, believe me, we know.
Title blocks.
Yeah. So, okay, so we'll see you in a month.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
In the meantime, happy July fourth.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the holiday, thank you.
You as well.
They build that sake brewery in time, maybe.
That does make sense, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say one word quickly?
Yes.
This is off-topic. This is about Mavis. And I had emailed Mr. Dupree the other day to say, "I have had an honor amount of compliments on the building." And I said, "So, if I'm getting all these compliments, I can only imagine the number you're getting." And so, I have always voiced my opinion, even in disagreement or what, so I thought it was owing fair that I should be first to say, "Congratulations, Amal Saka."
Thank you.
And I do have people in the grocery store coming, saying, "Thank you for the Mavis, it looks great." I tell them to thank the applicants. So, the next item on the agenda is Continue Public Hearing for Hyde Park Town Center North. As a reminder, the applicants are seeking approval for, site plan amendment approval, I should say, to re-clad buildings three, four, and five. These are the ones we know as closest to Pine Woods, and number five is right along Route Nine.
And the Feeds Plus.
And Feeds Plus, where Building Three is. Making a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were here, I think, just two weeks ago, and we were trying to finalize this site plan, and I believe most of the discussion pertained to some of the components, some of the additional items that you were asking for, which I'm going to go over those very quickly. And we also talked about phasing this site plan, and, so I'll get to the end, and then I'll go back to the beginning. The reason that we're, we had asked or requested for the phased site plan is because the construction of Mavis actually got ahead of a lot of the site work, and they're hoping to open next week. We've been working very closely with the town's consultants, the various other county consultants, and the town's building inspector, to try to assist us with getting that store open, and they've been fantastic. So, we're here tonight to go over those modifications, but also to talk about that phasing plan, so hopefully Mavis can open sometime next week. You did have a set of plans and elevations, and we've gone over those several times. The few items that we changed between two weeks, and then the submission that you have here tonight, one had to do with the bench, so we added the bench to the south side of Building Four. We changed all of the pedestrian cross-site walks to the bar-style striping. With respect to the landscaping, the trees in front of Building Five, which is Emergency One, the new trees will not be installed, and the one cherry tree will be relocated, that was supposed to be installed, will be relocated to the north side of Building Four. We located all of, we did speak to the fire chief after the meeting, we located all of the Knox box locations on the elevations.
You showed them.
I don't know if you saw that, but that was added on there. We fixed, I say, in parentheses, the lighting plan. With respect to the elevations, all of the dimensions, colors, and materials are shown. We illustrated all of the signs, and we did show what Verizon is proposing. I'm not even going to bring that up tonight, so we'll work that out with Tad tomorrow. We added the barber pole, and then, of course, we added the phasing plan.
That's a great summation, Ms. Leibl, thank you. I believe, just so the rest of the audience knows, this has been subject to an extensive review. Once we agreed on the building elevations, the re-cladding, what they were proposing, and I think we're all satisfied, happily satisfied with them, the rest of it became very easy, so we have a resolution prepared tonight for approval. The only thing I'll note are, one, the signs, the directory signs, the monument signs, freestanding, are part of the approval, and we're approving the panels as part of that. We're not approving the individual wall-mounted signs. There weren't enough details, the dimensions are given, but there's no letter height. And then, Ms. Dexter raised the issue, Tad keeps raising it, I think it'll be discussed with her tomorrow about design unity. I know there's a beadboard back proposed for some of the signs, not all of them, as a backing, but it looks as though the font styles are radically different. The Siteburns Barber Shop is all lowercase, so we're going to have to work somehow on this to get you both what your tenants want and what our code requires. The also, in the, some of the conditions, one includes removing a portion of what the applicants referred to as Central Park, there's a little cutout there section. I know you included it just because of the temporary light that's going to go there, but Tad said that's fine, because you can install something that's part of Phase Two without it. And I also note that Tad and Pete have done some preliminary fieldwork for Mavis' expected request for the CO, which is great. And we had an offline meeting with the two owners, or two of the owners, about the sidewalk fronting the Emergency One building. It's going to be, do we have a condition to revise that to ten feet, as per the schematic that's in the Delaware Engineering Report?
Yeah, and we're going to, and we're also going, and I think we'll have to make a few changes to that here, but we're also going to extend that sidewalk, replace, there's a, what, three or, three or four-foot wide concrete sidewalk now that's adjacent to the parking area next to the, what will be the Emergency One building. So, once they do the ten-foot sidewalk in front, in front of the building, which, which is not going to happen until they get to the end of, you know, the construction for that building. But they're also going to replace the sidewalk that goes from the end of the future Emergency One building to the crosswalk that's at the main access drive. So, we're not sure that that's going to be ten feet, that might be eight foot, because when you and I and Tad were out there, we don't want to affect, you know, the root systems of the trees that are there, so we may have to cut that ten-foot back a little bit, but we'll, we'll deal with that.
I discussed that with Ms. Moss, and if you have to change it from ten feet, it would be de minimis.
Yeah.
Because we're aware that, we want to protect the trees.
Yeah.
I'm just a little concerned about the timing, and unfortunately, I did not come to that meeting where the sidewalk was discussed, and I'm concerned about tying it to the construction in Phase Two. My understanding was that the applicant was willing to do this when you were going to implement your TAP grant, and they are planting, as we all know, all of the plants in that area. At this point, they're planning on putting in the plants, you know, up until the, the bus stop sign that we had showed, so that they can modify that area.
My recollection of the meeting was that they said, "No, let's go ahead and do the ten feet now," and the condition is just to revise the plan set to show that, that's, it's not to install it right now, that's going to be part of what you're working on.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be done, that doesn't have to be done until the Emergency One building's done.
But they may want to get a CO for that Emergency One building, you know, by spring of next year, so all of those plantings then will get pulled out and, and...
Well, you wouldn't have to, the plantings don't go in, I mean, you wouldn't be putting the plantings in the front part of it.
They're planting all of those today and tomorrow.
Well, that's why we kind of, that's why we kind of told them, "Look, why don't you plan ahead for, you know, where, you know, the sidewalk's going to be," and not put them in now, but, I mean, I guess they said, "No, just go ahead and put them in."
Well, because they purchased all of those plants, you know, they've been sitting, I just misunderstood until I said this.
Well, your house, well, your house, uh, needs a little, right?
Yeah, I guess my house could look really good. Oh, crap, this is on TV.
No, I'm not saying, not that I've been over to your house.
No, no, I, I'm not really sure about the timing, that's why I was a little, I guess I was surprised when I saw it in here as a condition. I'm trying to figure out a way that we can acknowledge that they're agreeing to do it, but not tie it to that construction. I thought that this work was being done as part of, I thought the town was actually going to put the sidewalk in.
No, but they have to do something as part of the Emergency One building work, because there's, there's at least a three- or four-inch lip to get from the current sidewalk into, you know, the building, first floor, so they have to do something.
So, let me ask you this, then, we had a conversation with Tad about, once we proceed with Buildings Three, Four, and Five, presumably all of the site work at that point would have been completed for the project, and so she could individually issue COs for each of those buildings.
Yeah, you can get a CO for each building until the last one, that's when all site work must be finished by then.
Right.
Okay, I thought all of the site work, the way that I heard her explain it was that it...
She can give you, she can give, I discussed this with her to make certain, you can get a CO as each building is constructed without all site plan. It's just like when we have townhomes. The townhomes are given COs as they're built, not all elements of site plan are done yet, then, because it's a really long site plan process, because they have to build them.
Well, then, we really didn't have to phase this, this site plan, then, because we could have just said the balance of the site work was going to be done when all of the buildings were going to be done. That, that was why I thought we were doing it.
The problem was, is that this was done, Mavis was done only with one building, so if it's just one building, there's no multiple COs to give, it's, so that, it would be the effect, the last building, so it has to be all the site work done, so you do need to phase it, that's correct.
Yeah, as long as, when we try to get the building permit for building, for the Emergency One building, or sorry, for the Building Four, where Verizon is going, when we get the CO for that, we're not going to be held to making sure that that sidewalk is finished, that that sidewalk would get finished with building.
No, because when we, when we, when we spoke to Nick, he said, "As soon as the major construction of the Emergency One building is done,"
Okay.
"They don't have any, you know, equipment in the front, you know, like lifts or anything like that, or stuff that would damage the sidewalk."
Okay.
He said, "Then they will do the ten-foot sidewalk as part of the Emergency One building."
So, can we just add here that this work would be done as part of the site work for Building Five?
I'll make, I'll make you the same offer, which is that we can go ahead and adopt it tonight, and then we can come back and have another conversation if, if it turns out that the timing doesn't work, but this is, this is...
But if she wants to, I mean, if she, I mean, I think if it's done, if it's put in that the sidewalk is done as part of the work for the...
Site work for Building Five.
Building number five, that should be fine, right?
It could be done, it could be done as, it's Ellen Phase, it could be, the sidewalk could be done as, before you get the CO for the Feeds Plus building. We didn't want to tie it to any specific site.
Okay, as long as everyone's in agreement, we won't have a problem getting a CO for Building Four. That was the, that was the concern, okay.
So, what if we say revision of the site plan to, to be installed before, prior to the issuance of the CO for the last building, the last constructed building?
What?
Want to write on that?
Revision of the site plan to show a ten-foot wide sidewalk.
Yeah, and I had two questions, that was actually the easier of the two.
Yeah, that's fine.
Victoria?
Just put that care at the very end, just make, withdraw to the satisfaction of the town engineer parenthetical.
Oh, you have a different version.
Yes. Tad was not comfortable with that version, so I had to change it as well. The condition now reads, "Revision of the site plan to show a ten-foot sidewalk fronting Building Five, consistent with Appendix C of the Planning and Engineering Report for the redevelopment of the Town Center." CGC four-one-six-five-eight, May two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Delaware Engineering DPC, Section One Sheet L one oh two.
Wait, I'm agreeing to it, and I've never seen it.
Comma, to be installed prior to issuance.
Bingo.
And if you want, I can attach it to the resolution, I have a copy of it. I have a copy of it.
Be installed prior.
For the last building in Phase Two.
Prior to issuance of CO for the last building.
Which brings up, just since we're all collectively, you know, thinking and collaborating here, Kelly and I went back because of the fact that we're at CO, and we went back and took a look at the original approval from July, July, June, about literally almost a year ago, June 22nd, 2017, and there are three conditions before CO. I just wanted to chat for a minute about that. The first one is proof of recording of a cross season, which is already done. The third one, I'm sorry, the second one is the.
Neil, could you please use the microphone?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Just to back up, yeah. So, there were three conditions prior to CO from the June 2017 report, and obviously, we got where we are a little bit faster than we thought, and, and tonight being what it is, we're really close, so we went back and took a look at that and, basically, where we're sort of heading is kind of akin to Condition Nine, where you moved the Central Park from Phase One to Phase Two. We want to talk a little bit about two of the conditions of CO that are open and just how, how, what's the best way to handle them, given where we are. One is the sidewalk along Pine Woods Road.
That's already been moved over to Phase Two?
By approval of this.
We just wanted to confirm that that was the case.
Yeah, no, we talked about that in the field the other day with Tad.
Do they have to amend the Mavis?
I don't think you need to amend the prior. What I think you should do, though, is you might want to say that this resolution supersedes that resolution.
Previous to prior resolution.
Correct.
And what's the other, before we say that, what's the other condition?
The Novus Engineering. So, I can read the language, but.
Yeah, read it, yeah, why don't you read it for the board?
Yeah, and, and, because we got to figure out something that works that's also realistic to giving you a real test as well. I think that's the issue here. So, it says, submission of a report from Novus Engineering, reviewed, excuse me, and approved by the Planning Board's Noise Consultant, which determines the necessity of additional wall absorption materials on the interior of the auto repair shop. If the report indicates that such material is necessary, it shall be installed before a CO may be issued. We're committed to doing that. The issue is needing to get open in order to actually have equipment in there that you can test it on. We weren't as smart as we all thought we were when we drafted this.
You won't have equipment in there before the CO?
Well, so, just for a timing perspective, keep it kind of short. Bagged it, Novus Engineering can come on Friday at 10:00 AM. The equipment will be there. The problem is that he can get, you know, a letter done fairly quickly, but the criteria is that it has to be reviewed and approved by the Noise Consultant, and we are trying to get the CO Friday so that they can open on Monday. That's the goal. So, from a timing perspective, it's getting pretty tight.
Well, I don't know. So, I thought that we, I thought that we talked about when we were there the other day, on Tuesday, that Mark Bagden did work with the architect. He worked with the architect. He reviewed the architect's plans before they were submitted for a building permit to make sure that the mitigation that he recommended inside the building was indeed part of the building plans, so.
And he made, and he did calculations to develop that, correct.
And he did, and he did, the calc, so we, you and I had discussed that we could get a, a letter from Mark.
Yes.
Saying that that, you know, was done.
Correct.
Okay, so that's one thing, but then, okay, then we're, then we're into, okay, to really, to really firm that up, you got to take like readings. So, I thought that Tad and I said that we could, we could figure out something where the second part of that was done, was done after the fact because we still have like COs to issue on the other buildings on the site.
Correct. I just wanted to acknowledge it tonight so that we.
Right, that's, 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 that's a good thing to bring up.
Yep.
Because I found out like 6:40.
Okay. It's, it's my fault, sorry.
No, no, this is terrible new information. So, to put this back into the record, your sound engineer, Mr. Bagden, stated here publicly on the record that he would not know whether the material that needed to be sprayed up into the ceiling was necessary. Right now, I believe it's only on the, on the tops of the walls, if I recall correctly. He wouldn't know until it was actually up and running. That, that's why the condition was the way it was, and you're right. That's kind of a tautological condition because, so, I mean, to have it up and running, he can test it, but the problem is, is that he can't be here until Friday, and you're applying for your CO on Friday, which means you have to have met all the conditions.
And the equipment really is just this week has been installed, you know, the, the equipment that they would use. So, if we could figure out a way to just have this, the current resolution supersede the prior one and acknowledge that the applicant is going to provide two letters. One, from the design engineer indicating that the materials were done substantially conformance with the design drawings, and then, secondly, he can perform the test that is submitted to the Planning Board's consultant.
I mean, can that, can that be done?
Unless the CO is issued, the CO is issued, unless it's a temporary CO.
Well.
We don't like to issue temporary COs because nobody ever comes back for the real CO. And see, Victoria's shaking her head in consternation because this is new information at the last moment.
Well, we still have, you know, we do have an active building permit application in for Building Four. We, obviously, everyone knows the sequence of events. We have to shift all of these tenants, so we're not, you know, we're not going to go anywhere. If you can give us a month or whatever it is that you'd like to do.
Microphone, microphone, Victoria, microphone?
I was asking Neil if he had the resolution number of the site plan resolution.
That's okay. Is there some way to?
If I could put this off and come back to it and.
I was just going to say, we can have discussion and public comment, but we haven't, there's nobody here from the public ready to comment. I recognize everyone here, you're all applicants, so.
Okay, so that really bought us a lot of time.
That was a long drawing out.
So, well, I'll ask, is anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? There being none, let me get additional comments because we, we haven't heard yet from the consultants. Ms. Axelson, any additional comments? Nope. Not just Sotero, any comments?
I mean, you know, we've been out there, we've been looking at everything. It looks like good. They're, they're, you know, busy trying to get it finished up. I do, I do want to make sure that the board understands that the light poles that you see there now are on, are only temporary. They are not the final light poles. The final light poles are coming like next week.
They're supposed to be delivered the 29th.
Okay, so they're coming next week, so in order for them to get a CO, they had to put up some temporary lights.
Which Ms. Moss has agreed to.
Yeah, so, so, so when you see the silver, the silver colored lights, don't, you know, go, oh my God, these aren't the ones that we approved. They're temporary, so.
And they're only going, they're only, they're only being installed along the.
Yes, in the area of Mavis, right, so.
Any comments from the board, Mr. Knapp?
I just have a question. I understand Friday would be the opening, but what's involved in the opening and how detrimental, besides like, no one wants to hear that it should be, that it would be postponed? I, I don't know what goes on for.
Well, they have, we call it FFNE, so it's furnishings and equipment that have to come in, and staff have to come in and get trained, so they're planning on doing that over the weekend in order to, so if they get the CO on Friday, they can effectively bring the public in and the staff in.
And they cannot bring the staff in unless there is a C vote?
They're really, you know, they're not supposed to do that, yeah.
Okay, I, he, I see those.
So, the other, the other reason, you know, there's, there's very, very significant liquidated damages that the applicants will be penalized for. I don't know if everyone knows what that is, but they, they have a set date that they have to open, and then they start getting penalized significantly. If it was not significant, we would not be running around like we are, so there is a reason to do it.
Now is the time for me to note, for everybody to know that that's not our responsibility.
Yes.
That's, they pursued it at their own expense. But now is the time for me also to note that, being a board that likes to see our town improve and help people who are investing in the community, we do try to work on these things. So, it looks as though they're trying to confer. Any other comments from the board, Mr. Oliver, Ms. Dexter? Mr. Pickett, Ms. Weiser?
No, I just wanted to weigh in on Tad's, on Ms. Moss's observation about the design unity for the Verizon sign. It should be against the beadboard and that the logo, Verizon logo should be centered.
That, that's going to be discussed, I guess, as part of signed permits, and you're meeting with Ms. Moss, so.
I don't know, well, we're, yeah, we're meeting tomorrow morning.
Eight thirty. At eight thirty.
So, would the board be comfortable moving this report condition as a condition precedent to obtaining a building permit for Buildings Three, Four, and Five?
Well, the prob, Four is we've, we've submitted, which is where Verizon is supposed to go to, so we can start moving them. I can't, I, building permit application Four has been into the town, and I can't get the signature on that from the building inspector until the chair signs these plans.
Right, I know. But we're either going to hold up the CO on Mavis or, I'm just trying to, what, what would, I need a trigger, I need a trigger for this report.
But, you know, we're not a tenant, we're not an applicant that's from out of town. We have to come back.
Wait, 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 you're not going to be able to meet all these, you're not going to be able to meet all the conditions on this to pull the building permit for, for Building Four that quickly? If the, if Mr. Bagden's going to be there on Friday and prepare a report.
Neil, you don't have the most recent, if you have a copy.
Yeah, if he's going to be there to prepare the report, and then Mr. Schmidt will be reviewing it on our behalf.
Yeah, yes, yes, but so.
Link it to Building Five.
So, you know, what you're saying is there's still, what, uh.
Can we come at a different length for a second? I'm just trying to collaborate here.
Did you want your?
We don't have, we don't have a true standard, do we? A DBA standard? But obviously, if it's noxious noise, we're in violation of our site plan and our special permit in your noise ordinance.
It's hard, it's hard to go to court with noxious noise, you know that.
Yeah.
It's much easier to just get the sound, sound deafening equipment put in now rather than have to go to court to fight it over.
And, and I don't think there's any intention, there's no intention of fighting about what the report says. I mean, I think we're, we've had all those discussions, many, many months of those discussions and much back and forth. This is really, I, I think in, in the end is going to be, oh, it either worked as everyone anticipated or it's slightly off, and X needs to be done for Y dollars, which is going to be much less than the liquidated damages, so I'm, I'm just, I, I completely respect the command and control aspect, but by the same token, a little bit of, of a leap of faith together, as we've been doing lately, may be appropriate here.
I think we're taking a leap of faith to move this to issuance of building permit for Three, Four, and Five.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, acknowledging, acknowledging.
You've got 10 conditions to meet before you can pull the building permit, before I can sign it. You think you can get that done in less time than what it's going to take George Schmidt to review Mr. Bagden's report?
Most of these we already addressed in, in the submit, I think a lot of these we addressed in the submission that we gave you, and I think it's probably, you know, a week's worth of work.
Approval of the water service by DCWWA?
They have all of the final closeout packages and we.
But does that mean you're going to have the permit prepared?
Tomorrow.
And.
And the health department.
The health departments as well?
Yes.
Some of the, I, I agree, I think some of these have been met. Not Number Six, not Number Seven, not Number Eight. These are all minor, though, I'll agree. But what else do you want us to try to do? Put it off to issuance of building permit for another build, like building, say, you're doing Building Four first, Building Three?
Just, well, Three.
Oh, you can make it Five by the time where you get to Five.
Which order are you doing them, Four, Three, Five?
They have to do Four first because.
No, I know Four's first.
Then Five.
Then Five, then Three.
Then Three.
So, Five. Is that acceptable to the board?
Five, yes.
Okay, we've left, we've left.
Thank you.
So, can we, can we put this off? So, I'm, I'm actually going to retype this one.
Yes.
And come back to it maybe after the public hearings?
Yes. Make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just bear with us a little bit, and we'll get this revised. And I agree, this should be retyped rather than.
This is, this one's a little bit.
I was thinking about how I was going to read this one.
I'll, I'll go, maybe after the public hearings, you can do some of the waivers while I'm in there, and we'll come back.
Okey doke. The next item is continued public hearing for the Locust Row Event Venue. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's no one here to speak about this application either. There's nothing new. We had the request to adjourn this to August 15th as requested by the applicant's representative, Ms. Vantile, who's sitting here. You need to add anything, do you? We're just working out some easement language or something with emergency access, as I know, so.
I, I just, I did have a question, though. What happened with the, the neighbor and the 50 feet of access?
We asked for an adjournment for all purposes.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. Still working it through.
And Mr. Sotero has, is prepared to issue comments about the bridge, but they're also still working to try to contact.
Yeah. Well, plus, they're also, you're also now investigating the pedestrian bridge as potential emergency access? Is that true?
I think we're working on that.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Any comments from consultants? Any comments from the board? Make a motion to adjourn this to August 15th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The last public hearing would be Salt Point Cellar, continued public hearing. The outlets are seeking approval for, to erect a cellar farm, which requires site plan approval as well as special use permit. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
To open the public hearing? Right? Is it a reopen or?
Reopen.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a reopen.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This would be reopened. They were the first because they were.
Yep.
A new public hearing are the first ones last time. So, Mr. Stumpf, I, I understand you met with Mr. Myring, climbed up Good Old Peach Hill a second time?
That is correct. And actually, a pleasure to see the board, but I have to say, I'm disappointed. I dressed for primetime last time, and on YouTube, my whole, the camera was all from the back, so. I just.
We actually did not have a person downstairs last time. It was done by remote, which is why you saw just a static camera, but he's here live tonight, so you're, you're back in primetime. And looking dazzling on my desk.
Oh, thank you. And with me tonight is John Spinella from Spinella Engineering. So, just to also give context, as the board well knows, I was here just to scant two weeks ago, and we've submitted materials since that visit, and also, we will be submitting some more, and, and I can go over those, but to reference what Mr. Dupree is referring to, yes, Mr. Tom Myring and I from, Tom, Mr. Tom Myring from the Friends of Peach Hill Park, we had a hike up to the Lookouts and the Summit, and I did, it was confirmed that the project will not be seen from the summit. And I presented pictures last time, and I should have articulated it better, but I went to the summit and those were the only views I saw, and none of them included the project. However, when I went up with Mr. Myring to the Catskill Overlook Lookout Point, we were able to distinguish a location where there will be a little bit of the project visible. So, I talked to Mr., so once we confirmed that, I talked to Mr. Myring about what he, what his thoughts were, and interestingly, he said, he, he just still wants the white pine screening, however, he doesn't want the panels totally concealed. He wants there to be a sign near, right near the overlook sign, that says the view includes panels and indicates where those panels are located.
And it's an interpretive decision. When I walked to the site with him, that's what he mentioned, I said, that sounds like a great idea to me.
Yeah, and we're definitely willing to do that, and I even...
Explain why it's an important thing for solar to be operating this way.
Yeah, and I even offered, and we plan to, seeing that as a lookout point, I noticed one chair, or one park bench, and we're offering to donate another, a second park bench for that view, donated from Cypress Creek. And even a third thing that Mr. Myring and I talked about, that the company is willing to do for Peach Hill Park, is, as I believe you know, we've submitted materials about how we have a pollinator initiative, where we plant pollinator wildflowers, native species, and Mr. Myring pointed out, there was three meadows at the, at the base of the hill, and the meadow nearest to the apple orchard. I brought up the pollinators, and he thought it'd be great if they could be planted in that one acre, and we've already started discussing how we would do that. He asked about the maintenance, but actually, with the pollinators, after four years, that's, there's no more maintenance, there's just some basic management for the first four years, but after that, no cost of maintenance.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add about the project? I can review a couple of things. I mean, we received the letters regarding the interconnection with Central Hudson, which we appreciate. I know that you're still, I think you still have a meeting with the fire department, if it hasn't already happened, it may have already hap... That's great.
I have a copy, though, so I met with Mr. Snell today, actually. Either, you can share that copy.
Okeydoke. We can make copies of it. Can you pass that down to Cynthia? Is that they've done some fire training? We also received the analysis of your Phase One archaeological report, we're waiting confirmation from the State Historic Preservation Officer, SHPO as we call it. And we had some discussion last time, but the board is still not there, about a removal bond versus the decommissioning plan. I'm looking to you, Pete, because for guidance along this somehow...
I don't know, I mean, I'm going to have to look at the code, but it's kind of tough to come up with a, a number, because the thing could be, what, twenty years out, twenty-five years out?
Yes.
So, that's something that we're going to have to figure out before we, before we consider final.
Okay.
So, I guess that's something I need to look at. I didn't yet.
Okay.
Do you have experience in that area?
No, in, in other application review process, it's, since those things need to be ironed out typically, in almost all the applications I've worked with, the decommissioning finalization is a condition of approval, so that it gets finalized once we kind of agree to the final application.
Didn't you guys just get approval in the town of Poughkeepsie for a site? And actually, not too far from here, right?
Yes, we did, yeah. I mean, we've, in the last...
What happened there? I guess, I guess that I should know, because we're the engineers there, too, but I don't.
I believe we did the same thing. We submitted material to be reviewed, and I don't believe it was totally finalized, and I believe it was a condition of approval in that case.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty common.
If this would be a condition, the question I'm asking is just, the town board is looking to us for guidance as part of this process. That's, that's what the town attorney said.
We'll, we'll provide a recommendation.
Okay.
Personally, I think the decommissioning plan is a better option than a bond.
I think it makes more sense, myself. Setting a bond that, an amount that would be, need to be renewed, however often they need to be renewed, until such time as you want to, that it's no longer functioning and somehow you abandon it, seems onerous to me on you, also onerous on us, because how do we predict what it's going to cost in twenty years from now? There are too many imponderables there, so, okay.
We agree.
Comments from the consultants, Ms. Axelson?
We, I guess there's a new submittal coming on our general comments, and we just issued a set of SWIP comments, and I don't think there's anything in front of us right now, but I haven't looked in the box in the office, so...
Yeah, we plan to be submitting some SWIP updates, some civil updates. As you recall, last time I was here, we discovered a minor extension of a wetland, and we're making modifications based on that, and John can tell you more about that.
Yeah, as far, as far as, you know, the SWIP comments, maybe we could have your engineer, before you, before you resubmit, talk to, like, our guy, so you guys can, so you guys can just go work it out before you submit, so we don't...
That was the plan, yep.
Okay. So, are you him?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Why don't you give me your card and stuff like that, and then what I'll do is have my engineer call you and, you know, you know, go over it. This way, we just, you know, work it out, and you guys can discuss it.
Sure.
All right?
The SWIP comments were fairly substantial when I read them, thank you. Continue.
Actually, I was just going to say, when we sent out the SWIP comments, I think we copied Kyle Southern, who was the engineer that we've been working with, so you may already have some contact information. He's the engineer at our office that worked on the SWIP.
Okay.
Any other comments, Ms. Axelson? Mr. Sotero, any additional comments?
No.
Ms. Polidaro?
I have a question for the board. At the last meeting, the board had requested a visual assessment be performed or be provided to the planning board, and the applicant has now come back saying that there will only be one small impact from the Catskill Creek Summit. I know the board members have done their own sidewalks, and so I, I think we should provide input tonight and be clear as to whether or not you're still looking for that visual assessment.
Thank you. I don't think that's required now, because we've all been, well, many of us have been to the site, we saw, like I said, you can see the little rubble. If you have binoculars, you can really see it, but you can see what the rubber pile is, because there's an actual lack of trees and through there. And I believe that if you plant some white pines below, and when they grow up, they'll block, not all of it, but they'll block some of the view.
Yeah.
There won't be a blocking of everything in leaf-off seasons, and I did confirm that there are a lot of people who do sledding, as well as cross-country skiing up there. It's a very active park. Also, a lot of dog walking, I've seen big dogs up there, so it's, it's used a lot, and...
I'm a fan now.
Well, did he show you we could see Mount Beacon and how far you could see?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can see the prison on the other side of eighty-four. We were all there looking... Surprising, yeah. It's really, it's amazing, it's an amazing set of views. I got, and I first saw it when there were no leaves on everything, so it was very, you know, on a clear day, you could see forever across with the... At any rate. So, I don't think we need the visual analysis, we just need to make sure that the landscaping is proposed, so that there'll be some screening from the area.
Yeah.
Additional comments, Ms. Weiser?
Just, I'll just satisfied with the addition of the white pines getting beefed up.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
I guess my question is, if we put up white pines, what's the impact going to be on the solar panels? Because that, that's going to be to the south of the solar panels.
It will be, but I...
No, it'll be to the west of the solar panels.
Or the, to the...
East of the solar panels.
East, east.
But the panels are facing east. In other words, I'm, it's going to...
They're facing more southerly, but we've already looked at where it would be, and we think we can provide adequate screening for what Mr. or the, in the board...
Isn't the, aren't the white pines placed, where they would be placed, wouldn't they be fairly far away from the panels? Am I wrong?
We will have to make some adjustments, but there is room to make those adjustments. I mean, we're, we're still just kind of indicating, finding exactly where we can plant the pines, and we're hoping to submit by, within the next couple of weeks, to submit something that shows what the visual simulation will look like, what, what we're trying to, what we'll, we'll try to attempt to conceal from that location.
Because Anne's right, we don't want to, like, this...
Yeah, you don't want to impact your project.
Yeah.
You know, because I, I don't know, I...
I believe the engineers found a way, and they're going to show that with visual...
Let's see what you can show, because, I mean, we want to mitigate to the maximum extent possible to minimize the impacts. That's all.
Yeah, that was, was just my question, is that depending on where it's placed, I was thinking that your project would then be impacted.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't want that either, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you for taking the time to walk the park with Mr. Myring, and, you know, really take into consideration how you could help out the Friends of Peach Hill Park, and, you know, make their ideas, you know, more, more realistic, so, thank you.
You're welcome. I gave him donuts, too.
You tried to ply us with, you tried to ply us with that as well.
Actually, I invited Tom to join us tonight, but I think he's satisfied with everything at this point, and I don't think any of, any of the friends from Peach Hill Park...
Just for the record, Mr. Lunt joined us on our walk, and I got the distinct impression that they were, both from Mr. Myring and from Mr. Lunt, that they were more than happy that the board would be doing its due diligence and its review process to take a hard look at everything. Their experience with other planning boards, they said, aren't always so good, so, thank you.
Yay for us.
Ms. Napoli?
No comments.
Okay, we're moving, it seems to me that we're moving along properly here, we just have to, we still haven't done Seeker, because we're waiting for the final sign off from SHPO. It looked as though the report that you provided, they didn't find enough, there was one small bit of pre-cont, or two areas of pre-contact, not enough around it to make anything significant. Also, it was a disturbed site, because it was a working operation, it looks like it was a farm with a dairy barn that was found, et cetera, so assuming that we can get, we get a sign off from SHPO, then we're done with Seeker, and then I think we just have some details to fix up after that, including whatever screening that you guys are going to propose. Plus, you can, should start addressing the SWIP comments, as you intend to, that can be a condition, obviously, because you're going to get the SWIP or not, a final approval. And other than that, I don't think there's much left.
Michael, bit of clarity here. In your discussion, I thought you were saying you don't need the visual impact analysis, but then Brian's talking about providing photo sim, and that's...
I think what you're going to do is just show where the landscaping would be, how it would block, what it would block, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
From, from that one spot.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Would you like to, would you want us to adjourn this to the, our meeting in July, July eighteenth?
Yeah. By the way, the shipbook concurrence was actually submitted today around one o'clock, it was emailed, so I'm not sure if anyone...
It came today, it was not read.
Okay.
Believe me, I was reading every email, and so I didn't receive it.
It was from Tom, so...
We received the report, the, the report, but not the SHPO.
Oh, okay. Got you.
We just received the report and its conclusions, that's why, you can tell I read it. But we didn't see anything from SHPO yet. I thought that, I thought Mr. Michael Wayne's email said that it was just submitted to SHPO, so assuming they concur, there's no more testing required.
Yeah, so, I just was bringing that up, because I think tonight was intended to be kind of like a teeing up towards the July eighteenth meeting, where I believe you would be in position, barring, we've covered all details, to be approved resolution and a NECDAC, and, and also, are, will you be closing the public hearing tonight, or will there...
We don't close the public hearing until we conclude Seeker.
Okay.
Because if you don't, if, if, if SHPO were to not sign off, we needed more information, we still, and plus, we don't close the public hearing until we quit receiving new information.
Understood.
That the public is allowed to do. So, make it a motion to adjourn this to July eighteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, soon, a month.
Thank you.
Have a happy Independence Day as well.
Happy July.
For your celebrations.
Thank you.
So, do we want to, what are we doing here?
Victoria, do you want us to do the resolution for the Town Center?
Yes.
So, we'll start with the artist collective?
If you'll indulge us, instead of, we, we want to have Victoria here when we do the Saki, so I'm going to change the order up real quickly. Let's do the artist collective, we're going to do some site plan waivers, as well as permits for signs. Who has the artist collective?
I do.
Ah.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution Recommendation for Issuance of Sign Permit Pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A, 4D. Artist Collective of Hyde Park, Resolution Number 2017, two thousand, Resolution Number 2017-33. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby recommends the zoning administration, administrator, issue the sign permit for Artist Collective of Hyde Park based on the latest revised application date, 5/22/18.
Second.
In discussion, everyone had a chance to look at the sign?
Yep.
The reason why the, the resolution starts with 2017 is because the actual sign application was submitted in 2017. Ms. Moss denied it because part of the sign was on, off their property, on the highway department property. And they just, after almost a year, revised the application, so now it's code compliant.
I will miss the original sign.
Me, too. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda would be a site plan waiver for Michael Hoteling at forty-five Bedard Place.
I have that one. Site plan waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, Resolution Number 2018-35. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Hoteling regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated June sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Bit of discussion, this is the sites on Bedard, so it's not visible from the river, nor from either one of the two historic sites, which give rise to the scenic area of statewide significance, which is why they have to have site plan in the first place. On favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next is Catherine Miller, forty-nine Havlin Road. This is for a waiver request, because they needed a building permit to install an air-conditioning unit. This is also in the historic overlay district, because it affects Havlin Medical School. Who has this application? This file? You do?
I do. Okay, site plan waiver, Catherine Miller. Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, Resolution 2018-34. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of a site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Catherine Miller on June first, two thousand and eighteen, for a property located at forty-nine Havlin Road, Poughkeepsie, New York. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the file entitled Miller regarding the specific request as submitted by the building permit application dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, based on recommendations, recommendations of the zoning administrator. The next site plan waiver request is Brian Woolsey for twenty-two West Market Street. This is to permit a side landing and stairs that were previously installed and repaired without a building permit. This is also in the historic district, however, and the SaaS, however, this is only visible from one small portion, that the public doesn't have access of the venerable estate, and further, it's already installed, so there shouldn't be any impacts to the site. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Site Plan, Site Plan Waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, Resolution Number 2018-36. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Brian Woolsey on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for property located twenty-two West Market Street in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde, Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Woolsey regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated May tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. For the next application, Ms. Denapoli is recused, because she is seeking a site plan waiver herself to put on her rear generator at thirty-five South Drive. The generator will not be visible from either historic site, nor from the river, even during leaf-off sessions, and we have the recommendation from the zoning administrator, so who has this file?
I do. Denapoli, Site Plan Waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, Resolution Number 2018-37. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of a site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Michelle and Diane Denapoli on June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for property located at thirty-five South Drive in the Town of Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Denapoli regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pickett was about to ask you about the color of the generator.
Is it beige?
I'd like to see a sample.
The next item on the agenda for a site plan waiver would be Robert McDougall. The application is for a remodel at seventy-three Fuller Lane. This is in the statewide area scenic, scenic area statewide significance as well, however, is not visible from the historic sites or the river. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Site Plan Waiver for Robert McDougall, seventy-three Fuller Lane, Resolution Number 2018-33. Whereas, 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 a request for site plan waivers has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board to Robert McDougall for alterations to the garage and interior, To The Garage And Interior Alterations To The Single Family Home Requiring A Building Permit And Whereas 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 Therefore Be It Resolved That The Town Of Hyde Park Planning Board Hereby Waives Site Plan Requirements For The Proposed Changes As Described In The Building Permit Application Received By The Building Department, May 27, 2018 And Revised By Michael Burda, Architect, June 18, 2018.
Second.
Before I ask for a vote, I need to correct my own statements earlier. This site is visible from the river. However, we also gave it a site plan waiver by, under a prior owner. And actually, I think this is an improvement to what we authorized the waiver on the first time. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. And make it a motion, so Berry Bed and Breakfast will be, the approval will be expiring. So we need to set a public hearing for that for July 18th. The actual approval will have already expired by then. But we have a letter, it would be-
A timely request has been made?
A timely request has been made prior to the deadline. So as long as the timely request has been made, legally, we are authorized to extend it. So make it a motion to set a public hearing for July 18th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Are we ready to go on the town center resolution?
They're reading it back to each other.
Ben Harmon, too far Harmon.
Ben, why don't we go ahead and have the Saki manufacturer, go ahead and come up and set up? That we'll have time to get everything done.
Yeah, we're gonna drop that.
Can we take a two-minute break, a really fast one?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Saki for everyone.
Ah.
Two-minute break.
You got your generator? Saki for everyone.
Mike's our live.
Oh, who's got the file?
I do.
You presented?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
We had this one.
No, even.
We just, we have.
I don't know.
I don't know.
The only thing I can.
Yeah, so.
Voila.
So. So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
So.
I don't know.
The only thing I can.
Yeah, so.
So.
Voila.
So.
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 I want a sample of the sign on there.
I'm sorry?
Sounds like a big one, too.
I'm sorry?
Sounds like a big one.
It's bigger than what I thought.
Yeah.
It's sixteen ten.
Ooh.
I'm thinking we just made it like eight, ten, maybe twelve.
We have a four kilowatt.
At my bed and breakfast.
You might have somebody's battery.
Well, our batteries, somebody on your table, or something historic.
You gonna give one to everyone?
Oh, your neighbors that have long extensions for it.
My neighbors are already saying that they're-
It's tough.
Oh, yeah.
It's on a hook right there.
Just gonna move in with it, or something, long term.
They're elders, so we said, all right, we'll let you.
Most of them are tiny.
It's pretty good.
The balls are even.
I have it.
They have little big, little characters.
I do. Thank you. Hot off the bat.
Ah, yes.
Wow.
Are we reading this first?
I would imagine so.
They collaborated.
It's not ready to go. It's not ready to go.
Yeah.
You may, you may have, Ms. Alexander and Ms. Potter are gonna be getting again. It's still not ready to go, so we're gonna start with Saki manufacturer. That's okay?
Sure.
We're gonna start with samples.
Okay.
So, thanks for everyone's forbearance for the break. And we have a really exciting project ahead of us. This is something that's unusual for our community to have a Saki manufacturer in it in the little Hyde Park, New York. But I think I can speak on behalf of the town to say that we're delighted that you're gonna be redeveloping the former Stop and Shop and before that ShopRite building. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, please, because this is your first time to appear before the public, state your names for the record whenever you speak. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, and good evening. My name is Michael Zarin. I'm with the law firm Zarin and Stymets. On behalf of Asashi Shuizo International LTD, the applicant in this matter, with me tonight is Stu Messager and Linda Standly from Chazen, Alex Kelly from Reed Hillibrand, the landscape architects, and David Kuhn and Mark McDonald from, from Pelly Clark Pelly, the architects. And we are glad to be here. I know many of you have already heard certain aspects of the project and have seen some of our prior presentations, although I know there are some of you have not, and certainly the public has not had an opportunity, but we'll try to make it brief but informative. As you all know, or many of you may know, Asashi Shuizo is a company in Japan, in the southwestern mountains of Japan, who have been making sake for generations, up to eleven generations. It is considered only, they only make and in the recent generations, the highest quality sake in the world. This will be the first, hopefully, sake manufacturing plant on the northeast, on the eastern coast. There's one or two in California, but this will be the first one on the east coast of the United States. They are proposing to repurpose the Stop and Shop facility that is currently vacant and fifteen acres, St. Andrews Road. The facility will include a manufacturing of sake, a tasting room, and tours of the manufacturing operation, as well as a complete architectural repurposing of the building that I will let the architects explain to you in a moment. For some of you are, have heard this, but the manufacturing of sake is a ritual type of operation, a cultural and almost spiritual in its technique. Without getting into details, it's something that will be certainly a destination, that people will come and, and be informed during the tours as to this very unique processing. And the way the, the facility will be designed will be to allow tours of the operation and then a tasting room, and then there will be a collaboration with the Culinary Institute with respect to food, albeit, I should emphasize, that the facility will be 100% owned by Asashi Shuizo and will be fully under tax rolls and the like. The site plan application that we've submitted, we thank many of you for your input to date on helping us and assisting us on various of the issues to bring you full site plan drawings that we hope and consider is compliant with your code regulations and fits the spirit and vision of this, of this iconic town. We have also, tonight, are prepared, Pelly Clark Pelly will make a presentation going through the site plans and general description of the site plans, as well as some of the responses to the pre-submission meeting and other comments that we received from some of you previously. After that, Stu Messager from Chazen will discuss some of the utility issues. Our hope is, tonight, that we could start the lead agency in the secret process, as well as referral to the county, and perhaps a referral to the ZBA as we need assigned variance. And although I know we cannot obtain any determinations from the ZBA, if possible, we'd like to at least start that process. So, with that said, I turn it over to Dave Kuhn from Pelly Clark Pelly to give you a quick-
Sure, Mark's gonna help me out as well.
And Mark.
The microphone?
Yeah.
My name's Dave Kuhn from Pelly Clark Pelly.
[laughing]
And he's Mark McDonald from Pelly Clark Pelly. Also, Alex Kelly's here to answer, respond to any questions concerning the landscape design. Thank you for meeting with us tonight. We really appreciate it. Very quickly, I thought we would just go back over the site plan and how it's organized. As I sat down here, I realized that the rice polishing building is missing from this model.
Yep.
It's probably in the box, but we can refer to the, that's actually a better drawing, I think, than the model. With this site, I think the place to start is to reiterate that we are keeping the access and the exits to the site the same as they currently are right now. This is the existing former Stop and Shop. The rice polishing building is over here. You'll see it on the site plan there. And the other structure, the other primary structure on the site is the wastewater treatment plant. Starting with the wastewater treatment plant, well, I should back up a second and say that Mark and Alex and I are the US architects, and we're working with Japanese architects in our Tokyo office that are working directly with the owner, which many of you have met. Their desire for the wastewater treatment plant is to build a, a screen wall around it, high enough to screen visibility of the machinery that's inside, but their desire is to keep it open air so that they can keep the footprint of it as small as possible, but always, but also to allow access through the top to replace and repair equipment. Both the wastewater treatment plant and the lower, I would say, two-thirds of the rice polishing building will be clad with a Japanese material, which is actually charred cedar. That's called sosujiban, which is a traditional Japanese material. It's basically charred wood. So, moving to the rice polishing building, the rice polishing building is where the process of making sake starts. It's where all of the rice that is delivered to the site will first arrive to the site, be delivered there. It goes into the rice polishing building, which is thirty-nine feet tall, and it's tumbled in a couple of different machines to fifty percent or less of its original size. The rice polishing building is designed to be reminiscent of a traditional Japanese rice storage building called a kura, K-U-R-A. In addition to the charred cedar siding, we've added windows and sunshades to relieve the bulk of the building a little bit. We've also added a, in working, in working in more detail with the owners about the nature of their tours and how the public interacts with, with this project, we've added a small eight-foot-deep porch to the northern side of the rice polishing building. It was determined that they would prefer not to have visitors come into the rice polishing building, but to sort of pass through an exterior porch so that they could look into and see what's going on inside without actually going in. That was, we also did that to address sort of the, because it formerly, I think, was approaching 110 feet long, unreleaved, and it's now 100 feet long plus an eight-foot to 10-foot-long porch. Moving over to the main brewery building, it turns out that the main brewery building at 55, 56,000 square feet is perfect for what they want to do, which is to make 7,000, brew 7,000 Goku a year. A Goku is roughly, it's like an ancient sake measurement, volumetric measurement, and it's roughly a 50-gallon barrel. So in order to brew 7,000 Goku, this is about the perfect size to do it. On the exterior, what we would like to do is take the existing porch colonnade off of it and replace it with a traditional Japanese structure called an engawa. The engawa will have a metal roof. It will have wood, timber structure, and we will take up the sidewalk and replace it with blue stone paving, or stone paving of some sort. To the cornice line, what the owner would like to do is, on top of the existing parapet, to add a decorative parapet, which is sort of a riff on traditional Japanese decorative parapets. It will be fabricated from Douglas fir timbers, so it'll look sort of like rafter tails. With this, it adds to the height of the, of the existing building a little bit, but the projection also helps with views to the mechanical units. The mechanical units, we've been coordinating with the mechanical engineer so that the rooftop mechanical units are all pushed to the northeast corner of the roof. And what we've done with this sketch that's being passed around is, we've drawn a section through the brewery showing the exact location and height of the rooftop units as we currently understand them. And then we took a line from the center of the driving lane of the westernmost lane of the Albany Post Road and drawn it through, grazing the outer edge of this parapet to show that the mechanical units will fit underneath that sightline. Very quickly, with the landscape, we've eliminated some of the excess parking that we don't need, and we're turning it back into lawn. We propose to plant a cherry tree grove with a stage in the middle for public performances, and also to be a focal point. One of the things that the owner has been talking about is holding a celebration for Hanami, which is the traditional cherry blossom festival in the springtime in Japan. We're also proposing to plant thickets of birch, gray birch, gray birch thickets. And there will also be a network of sidewalks that enter the site at that top corner. There'll be a curving sidewalk that comes around and approaches the entrance at the engawa. And we have recently added a more serpentine sidewalk that goes all the way over to the corner of St. Andrews and Albany Post Road and links in with a sidewalk crossing.
That was per, per the comments that we received at your, at your last meeting specifically.
And we've recently softened the curves a little bit and taken, we've taken a closer look at where the exact trees are and where there's a signal switching box. So we've, we've modified that a little bit. I think the last thing I'll say is, going inside to the public tasting area, in this corner here, where I think probably the caf, it looks like the cafe for the, for the grocery store was in this corner also, and this was the main entrance. The new entrance will be here. There'll be a, a tasting room and a mezzanine overlooking it, and then a long, open space that runs down the entire length of the front facade. There'll also be two public corridors that go back into the brewery that separate, it'll separate the visitors from the brewery workers, but it's for the tours, because there'll be brewery tours here as well. All of the, all of the windows will be replaced with wood windows, and this whole corner will become a Douglas fir and glass window wall that runs up to the height of the, the upper height of the engawa. So the palette is really Douglas fir, timber, stone, marble, limestone, polished concrete. That's it. That's the architectural design, at least.
Okay, thank you. I should mention just one or two other factoids that I don't think I, that I mentioned. There will be a decrease in overall impervious surface on the site by .7 acre, acres due to the substantial reduction in parking from the existing 298 spaces to 136. So that, that's, I think, a major upgrade. It's a $26 million investment in the repurposing and the, and the renovation, and it will employ, to begin with, 40, 40 persons, and see where we go from there. So I thought, before I turned it over to Stu, I mentioned that. So go ahead, Stu, thank you.
Thank you. I want to talk briefly about utilities. We'll start with water. The, the Stop and Shop is served with-
It's a $26 million investment in the repurposing and the renovation, and it will employ, to begin with, 40 persons, and see where we go from there. So, I thought, before I turned it over to Stuart, I mentioned that. So, go ahead, Stuart. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to talk briefly about utilities. We'll start with water. The Stop &amp; Shop is served with DCWA water. The sake process doesn't require a lot of additional treatment. They're planning to add some post-delivery treatment, basically chlorination, carbon filtration, and potentially softening, but nothing too fancy. The wastewater is in two streams. There's a sanitary stream, and there's a process stream. The sanitary stream, based on 40 employees and up to 100 visitors a day, works out to 1,100 gallons a day. The existing Stop &amp; Shop septic system was designed for 4,500 gallons a day, so there's plenty of capacity. We've investigated the condition of the tank and the pumps. Had the tank pumped out, it had been there a while, but it's in good shape. Completely reused, a 6,000 gallon septic tank. The pumps work, but they're pretty old, they're corroded, so we're going to recommend they be replaced. And that's really all we need to do to get that system up and running again. The process water works out to about 35,000 gallons a day. It'll go into a packaged wastewater treatment plant that we showed you on the site plan. That's currently under design. Basically, Asahi wants to use the same sort of plant that they use to treat their existing waste stream from a brewery in Japan, because they know that it works. It's a familiar technology to them, and it's used to treating sake. So, we'll be getting those plans, reviewing them, stamping them, and submitting them for a speedies permit in due time. Then, Michael already touched on the last utility piece, which is stormwater. We're able to reuse the stormwater facilities with a Stop &amp; Shop, and as Michael mentioned, there's a net reduction. So, we've submitted a SWIP to you. We don't think there's any particular issues. It has, it has good infrastructure in terms of piping and so forth. So, that's the utility overview.
I should also mention that in response to some of the concerns with respect to the sightline and the roof, the engawa was changed, the angle, by about 20% to further hide and provide from a visual that you'll see the engawa and the relief as opposed to the roof line. Maybe Dave can just show that.
No one's going to be able to hear you. Sorry, Doc, yeah, just transferring the handheld, it's fine.
The decorative element at the parapet had been tilted down more or less parallel to the engawa below, and we tipped it up in order to make the items on the roof, whatever was on the roof, less visible, in response to comments that were made at the last time.
We may need a different rendering that shows that.
Yeah.
We will modify our rendering.
So, again, the purpose of this is also to disguise flat roofs, which are barred, because essentially redoing this would be making it almost a new building. That noted, it's up to the board to determine whether this is sufficient disguise, and it sounds like it is to me, although it doesn't show with that particular elevation or rendering. But I can see it more over here, the tilt up, and also from the sightline analysis you provided, I can see it tilts up here as well. So, just to get that into the record, please continue.
That is, that is our presentation. We welcome, obviously, any thoughts, comments?
Okay, that really was brief for such a large project. First, I want to point out that, again, the town's very pleased to see the redevelopment of the existing site. The fact that you're reducing the amount of impervious by .7 acres is wonderful. It softens that whole building to see all the parking taken away from it. Just a quick note, you will need to specify, the zoning administrator in this town is a strict constructionist. It's a legal term, meaning you need to have everything specified on the plan, so when you say it'll be fieldstone or some other material, you need to specify what material will be.
What are you specifying, Alex?
I'm just letting you know. It's, Ms. Moss, when she, when she goes to give the CO, it needs to be as the plans are. There's some wiggle room. We changed the code to allow her to determine if something is de minimis, but she's pretty stingy with making those decisions, because she's a strict constructionist, so.
Engawa paving, we need to call out the material. No problem.
That's all. So, it's just a matter of making your, or having, asking your client to resolve it based on budget or aesthetic preference, either one. I was a little, I apologize. One of the things that was making me confused was, having seen the diorama here, all along we were told that this structure, the wastewater treatment facility, would look like the Rice Polishing Building that's somehow missing right there, which has a peaked roof. So, I assumed this had a peaked roof, and when I said you didn't have an elevation, I thought that was just a fence around the elevation that we don't know about yet. So, the fact that it's, that is the structure, I guess I'll call it, although with no roof, I don't think we would call it. We'll figure that out, what Ms. Moss would call it. But at any rate, that's interesting to me. I also want to say thank you very much to your team for the quick revisions to the environmental assessment form and the project narrative, because that does allow us to forward this on to county planning tonight, and we have a resolution prepared to do so. So, let's start over with our consultants, Ms. Axelson comments? I know you haven't done a deep dive into this yet.
I haven't done a deep dive into the plan review, although I just have to say, as a planner, I like to see a site that's underutilized or not in use, renovated, redeveloped, repurposed, whatever you want to call it, and I think it's good for the community, good for the property owner. Couple of notes on the EAF, Debbie Hubbard and I emailed back and forth, that it's craft brewery, not industrial, so you've got to be careful with that kind of language. The town zoning was specifically changed to address that. And then I figured there are going to be evening events, so she took a look at the hours and changed those a little bit and acknowledged that. I think that's an appropriate use for a tourist site to consider the possibility that they might have music in the evenings and evening events and parties and whatever. And Debbie knows that we'll need to, you guys will need to submit to New York State Historic Preservation Office, so I think something had been done in the past and something was recently submitted, so that should turn around quickly. And, you know, plans are very detailed, so I'll go through and come up with whatever points I find and get the comments out, probably beginning of next week. I know we're going to need a zoning table, parking calculations, the basic stuff like that. Because of tours, we wondered where there would be bus parking and/or a bus drop-off point, something along those lines. The landscaping looks really nice. I might need clarification about retaining vegetation, because I can see that you're doing that, just needs to be brought out. And I don't know, let's see. I also had a question about the enclosure on the wastewater treatment plant. That one wasn't clear to me, so maybe some kind of rendering of that would be helpful. And then, of course, my favorite thing is, I like to see benches. Anytime there's a sidewalk anywhere and it's of any length, having cared for a senior parent, sometimes people go less than a tenth of a mile and they need to sit down. And that's a great way to keep people milling around and interested in your site and keeping your site looking like it's active and busy. Bike racks? I know, that's a little superfluous, but there was discussion of bicycle circulation. Those are really the main things I came up with right away, and I have a feeling, once I issue my comments, I'll get some responses pretty quickly.
I don't think bike racks is superfluous, just very granular at this point. That's what we're here to do, is provide as much detail as we can for the applicants, so we can get them through more quickly.
Yep, and the landscaping looks wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sotero?
I know we discussed this at, when you guys came for the pre-application meeting, but why couldn't you get a right turn-in again off Route 9? I just, I don't remember what you said.
We, we went, yes.
It just seems so weird to me. I don't understand it.
We went to the DOT, Mr. Zimmerman, and he was, he pretty much shut us down.
I just, I just cannot understand what, why.
Well, the reason was because we've had meetings over the last 13 years with them where they've actually mentioned that you could apply, but there are different people there now. And apparently, the new junta has decided that there should be no right way in. This, we're talking about, as everyone up here knows, allowing a right in here. But one thing that's important to remember, one thing that's important to remember is that the actual address of this is, I think, number two, St. Andrews Road?
Five.
Number five? So, if visitors are coming up using GPS, they're not actually, I thought that the address was Route 9, but it's not. So, instead of going up this way, their GPS would take them this way or this way, either one, to the entrance, so I'm not as worried about the right way in now.
Yeah. All right, well, look, you know, the site plan, you know, is great. I mean, I was involved with the approval of the shop, right, when it was first built, so I think this is going to be awesome. But what's a little weird to me is that the parking lots, and I, you know, I think it's cool that you took out a lot of parking and create, you know, the seating area and all that area there. But what happens when, what happens when the one lot, like, I'll call it, you know, the main lot, gets filled up? How will people know that they got to go all the way around, like, the building to get, to get to the other side?
This is employee parking, as I understand it?
All, I thought only like a portion of it was, if I'm not mistaken.
There is overflow and employee.
Overflow, overflow, but if I look, remember the numbers correctly, you have a lot of, you have more parking shown than what you anticipate for visitors.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone, now look at that. I think that's right.
It's just, it was just, I mean, I don't know, maybe there should be some kind of a signage for overflow parking, I don't know, just, you know, think about it.
Okay, wait, microphone, microphone, thank you.
I should say that the employee entrance is back here on the northeast corner. So, this area here primarily is employee parking.
Okay, but I, I mean, other than that, I mean, I think this is, you know, awesome. Really, it's going to be cool.
Thank you.
That's an engineering term, too, cool.
You can awesome and a cool from an engineer.
Yeah, I mean, it is, really.
He's been trained by the board to make comments like that, to add his piece. Ms. Paul Drow, any comments?
We had some technical comments that Liz is incorporating into the memo, such as needing the zoning table and certain calculations for scale. We did discuss the need for a special use permit with the zoning administrator, because it's a non-conforming site, and there are some expansions happening, but because it's an overall decrease, she agreed that one was not needed.
Agreed.
And we have a resolution drafted tonight to classify it as type 1 and start the county review process.
Thank you. Ms. Weiser comments?
Well, thank you very much. Like my colleagues, I am thrilled that Hyde Park is going to be the home of the Asahi Chuzo, Chuzo, sake manufacturing plant and tasting room. Besides being so pleased that you chose this particular site, I'm in awe of the proposed architecture for the redevelopment of the existing building and the new Rice Polishing Building. By following the development guidelines and a comprehensive plan, your treatment will contribute to the architectural character of our district. Intended or not, the main building conveys the same sense of grace, light, and air as the Wallace Center at the FDR National Historic Site. The overhanging eaves of the engawa mirror the outdoor porch gables at the Wallace Cedric, which allows for a softening of the natural light entering the building. My main concern was the flat parapet, and with that 20-degree raising, it seems like I'm okay with that. So, other than that, this is astonishingly breathtaking building, and not to be neglectful, the Rice Polishing Building is a captivating study in quiet elegance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Can I ask one question? Is this one word or two words for Asahi Chuzo?
Two words.
Two words.
Because I've seen it several ways.
Including on your, including on your plans, it's one word occasionally on your plans as well.
In our letter, it's two, one word.
It's all different, and we don't know how to put it in the resolution.
That's the most difficult question.
Asahi is brewer in Japanese.
Okay.
And then chuzo.
As long as we're on this topic, how does Asahi, how does Asahi relate to this, to the name as well?
Asahi is the product.
Okay, that's the name of the brand?
So, Asahi is the name of the sake, the product name that they produce. And they're still determining what type of product, what the name will be for the product here.
So, should there be a hyphen between Asahi and Chuzo?
No, two words.
Two words.
Okay, thank you.
Asahi HP.
Mr. Pickett comments?
Yes, excited to see you working on it and going in. I have several questions. The, when you say you're in association with a culinary, can you describe that just?
It's, the Culinary Institute and Asahi Chuzo are collaborating in trying to brand sake in the United States as more of an accessible drink as opposed to just, just associated with Asian food, as it might be perceived today by some. They are trying to work on different products from the, that are ancillary to the byproducts of the rice and the manufacturing.
So, you might make sosu?
Excuse me?
You might make the sosu?
Not at the facility. There will be, at this time, there'll be no.
Or you could make it at the CIA facility.
Correct.
In Japan, with the, with the tailings of the rice, they make soap and ice cream and a drink, like a rice drink.
The sosu, yeah.
We should have, Mr. Pickett's been to Japan, he's actually been to this, been to Asahi Chuzo's factory there.
I haven't been to the factory, but you've got to, I've been all over Japan, but I've been to the store that's in the Ginzza District.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sure, sure.
Right by the Tokyo subway. Okay, so it's a collaboration. Okay. Another question I had was, and I don't know if it's under our purview, but in the polishing process, you know, the dust is created. I don't think it's that much, but there's no OSHA requirements or anything like that that falls on it?
There's no, no external discharges, and as far as the internal, I'm not, not aware of any OSHA, but we'll look into it if there's.
The machine's about the size of big refrigerators, whatever, but it was just a question.
Check into it, it's a good question.
Okay.
Mark and I believe that the Rice Polishing Machines have dust collection.
We're going to train you. Microphone.
My voice isn't loud enough.
Microphone. No, no, it's for television.
We're being broadcast.
We're being broadcast. And you can see that, you can watch yourself on YouTube if you're really that thrilled by doing it.
I don't think so. Mark and I believe that the Rice Polishing Machines have dust collection that's built into them.
Yeah, I've seen some of them, but, okay. There was just a comment, under energy, any thought about putting solar on the roof? There's a lot of flat roof there, and Tesla's got those systems now that are fairly thin that you wouldn't see from the street or whether, and there's what, 30,000 square feet? How big is that building?
60,000 square feet.
60,000 square feet, less, whatever, you've got air conditioning or whatever, it's just a thought.
It's a great idea.
The architects speak with the American and Japanese weekly, and they'll bring it up.
Okay. Then another one, any idea of putting electric car charging in the parking lots? More and more of you that for hotels and things like that.
Another good idea.
Yep. Get Tesla guys coming in.
You're plugging one company, I might add.
I think we already talked about the polishing from the rice, and like you said, they make rice crackers and other things, but soju with the CIA, it'd be nice to, you can't get it over here, you can't find it over here. It'd be nice to have, as a comparison. The other, I had another question under, in the project details, and I'm not sure if this fell in the right place, but is the proposed action expansion of the existing project or use? And it said no, but on the other hand, they're adding polishing and wastewater systems into it, so wouldn't that be a yes?
I would think that would still be a no, because it's not an existing use. This is a new use that's proposed. It was general retail as in stores.
Expansion of the existing project.
Right, but it doesn't, there's no existing project there or use, in other words. The use lapsed.
And then, there's a lot of details with regards to lighting, but that's it. The main focus, or big focus I have, is on the polishing building, because that's really what's about a little over 150 feet from the road. a little over 150 feet from the road, and it's really what you're gonna see from Route Nine. It's the first thing you're gonna see coming up.
That's, and that's the way they want it.
Okay, so I'm sure you'll, you'll end up having better renderings? Okay, because when I look at it, it's, I mean, I don't have any color renderings of it or whatever, and I don't expect you to do that, you know, that's, but. Being around Japan, they've got a lot of neat facilities, and I don't know how well this would tie in with, you know, the design here probably wouldn't. You'd want something that was a little more accommodating to that. But in Japan, they like the razor structures a little bit. And then the other thought is, do you have any place for any dry gardens?
I think we do along the N'gawa.
Okay, all right.
The idea, and Alex can speak to this, is there is.
There is this idea, I'm trained now.
Thank you.
There is this idea, the N'gawa is the traditional indoor/outdoor space in Japan, and this is up to Reed Hildebrandt, but I believe that to, you know, traditionally in Japan, to soften the transition from, from the, the living surface to the garden, you would put a gravel strip.
Thank you. Well-trained, in advance.
Well, I've been, I've been watching over here. Yeah, so exactly, just repeating what Dave said, I'm, we are very excited to get into that detail. That's a, something that as landscape architects, it's fun to design, and there's definitely gonna, need to be a transition between the stone paving and something like a gravel strip that had, we can work on the width, is gonna be necessary to make the two spaces feel like they're one, and that will definitely be included.
Also to capture rainwater. We haven't elected yet to, to capture it in a gutter, probably in the entrance areas, anywhere that you would pass under would probably have a gutter, but the rest of it could potentially, because it's not very deep, and we might be able to just have it drip into the gravel strip.
Any other comments, Mr. Pickett?
No, I think, again, my biggest, I think, point is that that polishing area is gonna be a first impression, and I wanna make sure that what we see as far as renderings and agree to them, whatever, is top-notch.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter? In advance, she's already telling me that this is gonna be.
So, um. Oh, okay, that's cool. Is that, is that the site?
Yep, this is, this is an older rendering where we still had a traffic lane that came to the post-road side and looped around, and at this time, we had loading facing St. Andrews, which we've rotated to face east now, and we've added windows along all of the sides with sun shades. But we'd be happy to produce some renderings of the new rice polishing building design if you'd like.
And I'll confess that they, the changes were made somewhat, it might, the, our code forbids windowless facades, so I said they'd have to add something. They, I suggested clear story windows, they added windows. And also the code, you can't have a loading dock facing your main entryway, so they relocated it as well, and they removed all of this area, too, at the same time.
Which is actually, I think, in terms of reducing impervious area, was actually a, a good idea, it's a bonus.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I am also very excited about this project coming to Hyde Park. I am, I was elated to hear that our old defunct shop was the perfect size for Saki Brewing, and I, who would have ever thought of that? But I do recognize the amount of effort that you are putting into this and the amount of investment that you're making into Hyde Park, and I think everything is looking gorgeous. I love this, I love the, the little models, you know, wanna take them home and play with them. But I am gonna be a bit of a wet blanket.
Do you have my rice polishing building?
No, I did not. I do not, I do not, do not. But I'm gonna be a bit of a wet blanket because our code explicitly states that when you have a building that's longer than 100 feet, it can't, it, it has to be articulated. It can't be one solid length, and you are 250 feet on the western elevation and 196 feet on the southern elevation, and I don't, I, we need to see articulation on there. I think that's how our code states it. Our code unfortunately also talks about putting, making it look like a small village, you know, different roof styles. I'm not sure that that's something that you have to do. I think it's just a, I'm not sure it said that you must do that, but when you look across the street, we made, the shopping center across the street, they had to put in, that's why things bump out, things bump in, things go up, things go down, so that when you look, it's not just one, and as beautiful as that is, it's not code compliant, in my opinion. Other people may disagree, and I haven't heard anybody else bring it up, but to me, that's a huge issue.
Are, are you talking about the existing, grin, the existing grocery building that's 250 feet?
Yeah, that's 250 feet across the front.
Just one clarification.
It was approved under the old code before they required anything over 100 feet to be a series of small buildings.
But even so, that, even so, what they did with that building is about 100 feet in or something, they, they put that big kind of, looks like it was just added on, but it's articulated as much as.
The central tower.
Yeah, the central tower there. I'm not sure how you're going to approach that, but to me, it is not code compliant.
Can I ask, is, is that a guideline, or is it a mandatory?
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement of the code.
Now, is that?
I, I was trying to find the exact section, hopefully Ms. Exson might be able to.
I didn't bring my code book tonight, I should have thought about that.
I, well, I didn't either, but I thought in reading your code, and we'll go back, obviously, and, and check, I thought our interpretation, or we saw it, was for new buildings as opposed to a repurposing of an existing building. So we will go back and look at that, but that was our reading interpretation of the code. I thought we even had those conversations with your code enforcement person at the time because that would be a, obviously, a substantial expense, and we'll see.
And possibly not desirable, given the architectural treatment that we're doing here. I mean, it seems inconsistent with.
You know, I.
No, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just pointing it out.
To me, it's two things, it's beauty and then there's code.
Right, right, and, and so maybe that we wanna.
I think what you've done is beautiful, I just, I personally don't think that it meets what our code is asking for.
I mean, worse comes to worse, we potentially might ask for a variance of that, but.
Not a variance, so this is now, it's my turn to pop in here and say that all of the requirements under 108-4.5 are requirements, they're standards. If you also read the code, it says that the planning board can relax any of these standards based on unique elements of the property, based on a lot of things, but it would be a, I could write the request myself for you, but I'm not allowed to do that, Victoria says.
Subsection G.
Yes.
Architectural. It's 108-4.5 G.
Yeah, so, but you're allowed to request relaxation of standards, not waivers, but relaxations. So I'm sure you can think up something that would provide reason for us to relax that standard.
It's a good point, Ann made.
Or take another look at it and see if there's something that would work. Well, the way it contributes to the architectural, architectural enhancement of our district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We, I think we can certainly talk to the Japan office and charge them with the, the challenge of thinking about it and see if they can come.
Because I wouldn't wanna suggest anything to you, because I'm.
The, the challenge is just.
There's some beautiful things that probably.
I think, you know, the entire design team is working hard to come up with something that fits the spirit of traditional Japanese architecture.
While marrying into our code, which does not really anticipate traditional Japanese architecture. Let me just say that for now.
True.
It doesn't.
Do you want me to redo the section? It says, "Large building design where the building has a facade longer than 100 feet shall present the appearance of a grouping of two or more small, well-proportioned buildings incorporating Ls, wings, randas, porticos, courtyards, and similar elements as unifying features." So it's, thinking of a traditional.
We'll go back and address that.
I mean, it could just be, maybe you move your little gardening area into the center, shift things around, well, I don't.
All right, let it, we, we hear you.
This, this requirement also applies, we, we had this discussion, wastewater treatment plant and the rice polish, polishing building to the extent that they're longer than 100 feet.
Correct, and the rice polishing and wastewater treatment are new buildings, and we certainly are complying with that, but we, we appreciate it, we will definitely look at it both from a, both from an architectural as well as a statutory.
And just for reference, this kind of goes back to Mr. Pickett's comment about the rice polishing building. This standard has to do with the transportation corridor, which of course is Route Nine, so the rendering that you were discussing before about the rice polishing building should probably be as seen from Route Nine, yeah.
Thank you. Additional comments?
No, nothing else.
Mr. Oliver?
Again, I'd like to echo my colleagues with thanking you for looking at Hyde Park and making a substantial investment here. I think with all the new things happening here, this is gonna be just another thing that really adds to our town, and thank you for that. But I'm also going to agree with, with Ann on the rooftop there. Such a large expansive building, there's, you know, nothing to break up that, that long run, and I don't know if you could, or, or, I'm, I'm not gonna try to fully understand Japanese architecture, but that exposed rafter that you're showing, maybe just in, yeah, if you could, maybe on like the corners or different areas, have like another section of that step back and raise just to kind of break it up where it would still tie in, just, just a quick idea. Another question, you're gonna be producing over 300,000 gallons a year, right?
7,000 times 50, yes, yeah.
Do you know roughly, like, the truck traffic you're gonna be?
It's in the AAF.
It's in the AAF. It's much less than we had predicted. I mean, it's really in the sort of like, one or two trucks a day.
Yeah, I brought that issue up, and they, they provided the answers, plus they doubled it because the assumption would be that they would need the same number of deliveries of bottles in which to put the product in. So it doesn't add appreciably in any way to the traffic impacts.
There's a, there's a very minor rice, and then there's the, the shipping, but it ships in large quantities or concentrated quantities, and it's really not as much as one would, one would have thought.
The other one, my last comment, you talked about the rainwater collection. You might wanna check with New York State DEC. I think there's some pretty strict restrictions on rainwater harvesting for, in New York State, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Napoli?
It's a pleasure to see you all again, and let me echo all my other fellow members. It's a, a project that I think everyone is looking forward to. A couple of questions. One, I understand you're not going to have a kitchen, but with your occasional events that you've written in the AAF, I'm assuming there's going to be food? How is that being prepared? How is the cleanup? Are you planning sometime down the road, possibly, of having a kitchen? You're shaking, no.
At, at the moment, there's no immediate plans for a kitchen. There is back of house where there's dishwashing equipment and glasses and bottles will be washed, but at the moment, the CIA will be furnishing food. Everything is gonna be brought, brought in from offsite. There was no intention to cook here, there's no.
Catered. There'll be the caterers.
Yeah.
We've not been asked to design into the building any future possibility for it.
Okay. And I appreciate the changes made to the roof line, but I will reserve my comments until I see a new rendition. I don't wanna speak in haste one way or the other, but, but it is noticeable from the first time that I saw it. I also have to agree with Ms. Dexter with the 100-foot articulations, and I'm, I'm glad she realized it and noticed it. I had, I had bypassed that one, and we've had many issues in this town making other developers keep to that standard. I don't think it would be fair to them if we just say, oh, well, because it's a beautiful-looking building. I have full faith in the architects of the firm, that they are very clever and very resourceful and very dynamic, and I would be surprised if this does not turn out to be a more interesting building at the next go-around. And those are all my comments.
Thank you, Diane. As it turns out, the attorney for one of the applicants that we just required some articulation on, on an existing building that's being re-clad is here, so he's been listening, I'm sure, to everything he hears. I will note that in that, in this instance, that would be building, I think, three, three, yes, that's one closest to Pinewood Roads, Pinewood, Pinewood's Road. They were able to do an articulation, even though it's an existing building, and it's not a huge one, it's just something that, because it was, I think, 110 square feet, 110 linear feet, so it was just something that we did to satisfy the code, and it actually did make the building look nicer as well. So to.
And let me interrupt for a second, and if you know, Mr. Alexander, you do not wish him on a scoby complaining if we let you off. And he'll whine.
I've heard Neil's complaining, but I'm gonna let you take it.
We have an excellent relationship with Mr. Alexander.
Good.
It's been a long relationship developing, so a couple of things I wanna just point out that were not really pointed out before. Along the sidewalk, I believe you're proposing Ballard lighting, so it's gonna extend what you have here, which I think is a really nice addition, and it's gonna really welcome people. I mean, one of the things that, I was, I had the ability to meet the president and the CEO, the father and son behind this operation, and the town board met with them, and they both expressed a lot about wanting to be partners with the community, members of the community. Supervisor Rohr discussed whether there'd be a restaurant there. The answer was no, of course, as you know, but they were like, maybe down in the future at some point, we would think about that, because, you know, she's successfully pointed out, Hyde Park, we would like to have more dining options, lacking a central sewer, we don't have them. But this is another one that relates to community. The, I don't see it here, I can see the, how about there on the diorama, the wooden deck for the festivals? This isn't articulated at all what this would be, other than perhaps a tray blossom festival, but I know the owners talked about maybe occasional evening events as well, something that, again, would build on community, and I wanna make sure, I'm, I'm saying this for the record because I'd like it known by our residents, that this isn't just something that's gonna operate by itself and communicate with the CIA. They're really wanting to be part of Hyde Park. I got that loud and clear, and I don't know if it was mentioned this time, but it has been in our offline meetings, that the owner is actually going to be living here for a year, he and his wife, here on site, to make sure that the, I guess, to sort of oversee the construction of the project, but more importantly, to make sure that the Saki for the first year is produced to the level of quality that they want to, and that's not just a Japanese trait, that's something that we should all admire in any business owner, that he wants to relocate to a foreign country, where he doesn't speak much English, I can say, and his Japanese is a certain dialect of the southern area, not even traditional, so I think that's brave and wonderful. That shows the commitment they have to the project. If I can summarize a few things we heard, I think that Pete's comment about maybe there needing to be signage or something, that if this is all filled up, that they know to go around, other than leave, we don't want that to happen, we want, if there are visitors coming and there is, this is all filled up. I don't know how it would be all filled up, because, but there could be an unusual day where everyone decides, hey, it's a summer day, let's go drink some Saki. Who knows?
Buy some Saki.
Buy some Saki, yes, at any rate. So that, I think, was, was a relevant question. The other things that I starred, where of course, the fact that you heard the last three colleagues agree that the, the issue of the articulation for the length of the building needs to be addressed. You can address that through either architectural changes or figure out a narrative to request a relaxation of that standard if you want to. I think that, that, the, also the issue about the roof line, we'll need to see a better elevation that shows exactly how that's disguised. that shows exactly how that's disguised, the flat roof. But again, the section of code dealing with the flat roofs says that the size of the building is such that it needs to be, and this is one of those that it would need to be because it's huge, then it just needs to be hidden some way. So the question becomes, is, are the rafter endings and the tilt of the ngawa going to be enough to do that? And that's up to the planning board to maintain its idea. I am going to echo what Ms. Weiser said first off. I'm kind of wowed by the architecture, the fact that you're taking a box, and everything's a box. It's just how, depends on how you want to redo the exterior. But you've taken a box and done a really fantastic job. I congratulate you guys, as well as Mr. Matsui, on how you've collaborated on this, as well as, I take it, being able to interpret the owner's wishes for... This is truly turning an ugly duck into a swan, I think. I also, I think that at one point we saw picnic tables and benches somewhere through here. They're not shown anymore, so they're not proposed, is that it? Or, I'm looking at you, I could look at anybody, I suppose, I'm sorry.
Alex and Reed Hildebrandt, I should say, are sort of spearheading the, really pressing the owner for more information about programming the outdoor space. And that's something that Alex has been asking Mark and I about repeatedly. And we don't really, I have to admit, we don't really know the program of the deck right now, so we're just sort of taking a shot in the dark. But that whole space in the cherry trees, we're going to be programming. In the future, we can provide more information.
Other elements to note, they're retaining all of the existing plantings through here because it's nice and park-like. Then they're not just removing the asphalt from it, but they're taking the, should I use the term quinconcs? Style here is a formal planting, and I think this is also something so that there, you have a naturalistic, looks like any place in Hyde Park that's kept up nicely, put it that way. And then you go to a more formal design that then communicates that there's something else going on here, which I think is a great transition. And I believe that we were trying to figure out, so you'll need a variance for your signage from the ZBA? Is that what you said, Mr. Zarin?
Yes, yes, the size of the letterings on some of the signs.
In addition, we assumed you would need a ZBA, you might need a ZBA variance for stream disturbance within the 100 feet? But I'm not positive, I could, I don't have the gear scale, so nothing.
Outside of the 100 cent.
You can construct it with the grading outside of the 100 feet?
Right, we would, potentially, it's really close, and potentially we would need walls, but the idea is to stay out of the 100 feet.
I mean, I think that the 100-foot boundary is right there at the tip of that corner.
It is, it is. That, the...
I'm understanding how you construct without crossing over six inches to...
Well, because, because it's kind of a placeholder for size. That's why I said earlier that the plan is...
Oh, it hasn't fully been designed?
Hasn't been fully designed, right.
Okay. Just remember what I said about Ms. Moss being strict constructionist?
I heard it loud and clear.
Don't. If you need a variance to do some grading or whatever around it, just go ahead and get the variance.
We've had the same, the exact same observation, yeah.
Any other comments then, from anyone? So first, when would you like us to start the public hearing? We normally don't start it until there's been three days for responses from the involved interested agencies. Since this is June 20th, we could set a public hearing for the 18th, but you won't, we won't have responses back from all the agencies yet. We can also do it for the first meeting in August, it's up to you.
We would like to begin public hearing as soon as possible, so...
I think so as well, because I'll be interested to see if, I mean, when we have really beautiful things, we don't always have people coming out, it's when we get things that people don't want that happens. But I think it's wise to always try to introduce public comment into this process earlier as possible in case that maybe somehow drives a change of design or layout or whatever.
We would concur with that.
So first, Megan, a motion to set the public hearing for...
July 18th.
July 18th.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file and resolution?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution classifying the action declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review and referring to County Sake Brewery. June 20th, 2018, resolution number 2018-25, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type 1 action under SECRE, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to all other involved and interested agencies. Three, directs the secretary to refer the site plan to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-M of the general municipal law. Involved interested agencies: National Park Service, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, applicant to submit, New York State Department of Transportation, Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency, Dutchess County Department of Public Works, Hyde Park Fire District, Hyde Park Fire Inspector, Hyde Park Police Department, and the Hyde Park Board of Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a referral from the board to the ZBA to go before the ZBA?
No, you can apply directly because you have a pending site plan application.
Right. They'll ask us, they will ask us for recommendations.
That's what I was going, that's my next question. So they'll solicit a recommendation versus go over with, okay, thank you.
Some towns I know, you have to go to the planning board to be more or less denied or referred over, not here. We do have a protocol with the zoning board of appeals, we do all seeker work. If there's joint reviews, so we'll be doing that, so they can't take action until we conclude seeker.
Correct.
But otherwise, you know the drill, what am I saying?
Okay.
Otherwise, we should be good to go, and we'll see you on the 18th. Did you bring, did you guys bring copies so we could get the...
We submitted them.
Very efficient, like I expected.
All right.
Thanks so much, and again, all of you, enjoy your Independence Day holiday.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you. I have to point to, I want to read the resolution for...
Yes, okay. Sorry, we're going to do the resolution for the town center first. Jennifer and Neil, we're going to just read this resolution.
I gave you a later one?
Yes.
Just you?
And Chris has it, because he's reading it.
And you gave it to Chris?
Yes.
There was only one additional change from, everyone has a copy of the additional, be it further resolved clauses, and then I added the change to paragraph 10 that we had talked about earlier after the fact.
When he reads it, if we have questions, we'll ask.
All right, we're on.
Resolution granting conditional site plan approval, Hyde Park Town Center North Buildings 3, 4, and 5. Resolution number 16-15G, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chairperson or is authorized designate to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions, one, payment of fees and escrow; two, approval by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health of the onsite water treatment system and septic tank; three, approval of the water service by Dutchess County Wastewater Authority; four, revision of the landscape plan at the south end of Building 4 by relocating landscaping to the south of the six-foot sidewalk shown on sheet SP-1. Revision of the stone wall detail on the landscaping plans specified that it is a seating wall; five, revision of sheet SP-1 of the site plan to include one sitting bench located south of Building 4 adjacent to the entry of the proposed barber shop and flush to the wall; six, revision of sheet SP-1 to make the lighting shown on SP-1 consistent with what is shown on the Salix photometric sheet as follows. I clarify the location of all soffit and wall-mounted lights by using the symbols in the luminaire schedule and the lighting plan and the legend items on sheet SP-1. And two, add pointers to identify the soffit and wall-mounted items and the light specifications on the Salix plan. Seven, revision of the site plan to be a complete plan set for the site, including all pertinent notation and details from previous approved plan set dated October 6, 2017. Eight, revision of the elevations prepared by DeGraw and DeHan Architects to address the following items. A, addition of notation, the site plan approval includes tenant panels on the monument sign for Verizon and the barber shop, emergency one, and the location of the signs only. Individual tenant signs shall be submitted to the planning board and zoning administrator for approval. B, remove notation on elevation stating that colors are to be determined by tenant. Nine, revision of sheet SP-5 to remove the portion of the Central Park from Phase 1 and place it in Phase 2. Ten, revision of the site plan to show a 10-foot wide sidewalk fronting Building 5 consistent with Appendix C of the Planning and Engineering Report for the redevelopment of the Town Center CGC 41658, May 2018, prepared by Delaware Engineering DPC, Section 1, Sheet L-102, to be installed prior to the zoning administrator authorizing a certificate of occupancy for the last building in Phase 2. Be it further resolved, the condition two of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for Building 1 Mavis as set forth in Resolution Number 16-15C, submission of a report from Novus Engineering reviewed and approved by the planning board's noise consultant, which determines the necessity of additional wall absorption material on the interior of the auto repair shop. If the report indicates that such material is necessary, it shall be installed before a certificate of occupancy may be issued. It's hereby moved to be a condition that must be satisfied prior to the zoning administrator authorizing a building permit for Building 5. Be it further resolved, the condition three to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for Building 1 Mavis as set forth in Resolution Number 16-15C, installation of the sidewalk along Pinewood's Road in accordance with the site plan is hereby moved to be a condition that must be satisfied prior to the zoning administrator authorizing a building permit for Building 5.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow, good job there.
Thank you.
That was...
So I'm going to be, while I have you all here, while I have you all here, we've discussed on our side changing the time of the meetings to 6 o'clock rather than 7:00 PM. You all like this idea? Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, it's fun.
The reason why I say is, we had so many field changes up at the day as to resolutions that it gives me great pause to think that we would meet at 6 o'clock instead of 7, because... So we're going to need to try to, I guess, get resolutions earlier. No, 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 I'm happy to. It's just, I want to, I'm going to be sending out a note to people who appear before us regularly to let you know the change. We'll probably try to do this, I have to change the bylaws, so I've got to get a copy of the bylaws. We should ourselves adopt...
We can change the meeting schedule before the bylaws are officially changed.
Oh, okay.
So would we just do that by motion?
Then you should update the bylaws to be consistent.
Right, I had to talk to the town board about this, and Mr. Raplansky, the town attorney, who said immediately to the supervisor, why can't you guys meet at 6:00 as well? So clearly, I guess the consultants like this idea that we'd be meeting earlier, and I'm happy to, because I'd like to get home at 9:00 instead of 10:00. Okay, so we'll be, we'll probably be making this change. Do you guys want to consider making this as of September, get through July and August at 7:00 and then change it for our first meetings in September and therefore, thereupon?
Or sooner. Or sooner.
When would you like to start?
Well, we have hearings scheduled for July now.
Right, okay, yeah, so whenever we can clearly do it without impacting, well, no, because some of the public hearings are scheduled for 7:00, so...
They're all scheduled for 7:00, so it means that we would have to do workshop. Until we get through those public hearings, we would start setting the newer ones that we have for starting at 6:00 PM, right?
Right.
We're not going to have any new ones between now and July 18th.
No. But we have one starting on July 18th.
So I would not start it until August.
Okay.
Do August first.
Okay, all right.
Whatever works.
Thank you.
Tomorrow morning.
Last item on the agenda, a discussion about amending the resolution 2017-04D, which is the approval resolution for the hotel and wastewater treatment facility. Let me turn it over to Ms. Van Tallen, Mr. Budra. What started occasioning this was language from DOT initials, or issues with DOT.
There were two, and there were two different copies.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Has everyone seen the various versions of the proposed modification in the resolution that have been flying around today?
No.
All right, I'll briefly describe the situation that prompted a request for consideration of refining and clarifying the resolution. At the time that the project was approved, the condition was imposed that building permits would be issued upon proof that the highway work permit from the DOT had been issued. And we all expected that this would be something that would precede a pace. Well, it turns out that the issues with the finalization of the permit are made somewhat more difficult by the fact that the DOT wants the applicant to give to the DOT an easement for the traffic control loops, you know, those signals that one drives over? And we're more than happy to do it, more than happy to give it immediately without consideration. But then on top of asking for it, the DOT insists that all the paperwork be done to give them this easement before they'll give us our permit. Again, not a problem, but then they say, but we're kind of slow at getting things done. So we have the Attorney General working for us to do our work, and they take, you know, six to nine months to accept a gift of an easement. So this puts us in a great deal of difficulty. And Larry has been working with the folks at DOT, and the local office is really very cooperative and has agreed to allow access to construct the roadways within the project and to not hold us up to issue something called a perm 33 temporary construction access. So, but then they turn around and say, but we only give one at a time. So they've asked for certain conditions to be imposed to get the access, the northerly access. If you'll remember, there are two. The northerly one just goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and then the southerly. They've told Larry that they will give a temporary construction access permit for the southerly entrance, but they want us to first complete the work for the northerly. So in any event, while I could go on with even more details about what the situation is that prompted this, the bottom line is, we aren't going to be able to get the full highway work permit, perhaps for nine months. In fact, even to this day, and we've been telling you about this problem for months, even as we sit here tonight, we do not have the approval that DOT local office needs to give us to allow us to send the documents to the state. And Larry's sent them everything they need, but they have to approve, you know, every little detail before they even allow us to pass go, do not collect $250. So that's what prompted us to come back and say, look, is there some other condition that you could impose? And so naturally, the one that makes sense is this perm 33 temporary construction access for each respective entrance. In other words, the building permit for the wastewater treatment plant shouldn't be issued until we get that temporary access, and the building permit for the hotels shouldn't be issued until we get that temporary access. So that's what we were asking for. We got, in the rush to get these documents back to you, we kind of got off on a completely different issue, which was about needing to bring the roads up to the base course, so we got off track. So, but what we've done at this point is restored the language to the way it was originally drafted by, I think, Victoria and Tad, which is that the building permit wouldn't be issued until the temporary access was issued for the respective entrance by the DOT. And again, we're hopeful that in fact, the work will move more quickly. In other words, that we're planning to do everything we can to call the Attorney General's office and try to move up that process, but sometimes that just can't be done. So that's the basic difference in the...
And as a reminder, underpinning all this discussion is that the site prep work could be done under the SWIP?
Yes.
So that they could be allowed, permitted to have, to prepare the pad, certified pad, I think it's called? Which still sounds like it's a concrete pad, but it's not, it's just flatter. Flatter. Grated earth. So SWIP work would be done under, or that work would be done under SWIP, and...
You have to get there.
Right, and then they could start that relatively soon, because now the entrance for that would be the emergency safety access off Dorsey. The issue I had was, in some of the changes, it appeared the way the wording... The issue I had was, in some of the changes, it appeared the way the wording had become, that a building permit could be issued as long as they had an approved curb cut from on Dorsey. I'm like, wait, whoa, 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 we don't want Dorsey being used for construction of the hotel. We only want that to be used for the initial site preparation.
And we agree.
Yeah, of course.
We misspoke.
So one question I do have is whether you need the road, the southerly entrance, constructed before the building permit is issued for the hotel. That was a...
Well, they're saying here, they're saying here, the building permit for the hotel may be issued upon receipt of the zoning administrator, DOT perm 33 for temporary construction access for the southerly, right, Route 9 entrance. That's just a temporary construction access.
Right, right, it's a temporary construction access, but do you need the, so just having the temporary construction access doesn't stop them from using Dorsey? So that...
No, it doesn't, well...
Once they have the permit, then they can start on the southerly access, right?
But I'm asking if the southerly, if the board, this was a discussion with Tad, does the southerly access need to be constructed to a certain standard before the building permit can be issued? And that's, I guess, a question for Pete.
I mean, I don't know what does the DOT require of a temporary construction? I mean, as far as I know, it's just a stabilized stone construction access or...
Well, that's exactly, yeah, it allows you to access the site for purposes of clearing, writing.
It's not paving or anything, it's just a stone stabilized entrance. Right. So...
Wait, you just mentioned clearing and grading. I think the question is, is, the question would be, building permit issued for the hotel, does the temporary perm 33, does that allow construction vehicles to go in to start building a hotel?
Oh, yeah. Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it does. But now, so just, so this says here about the building permit for the wastewater plant issued, could be issued when you get, we get the perm 33 for the temp access for the northerly access. So does that mean that you're not gonna do anything with the hotel until you finish the wastewater treatment plant and you close out?
Yeah.
Because you said you can only have one temporary access off of Route 9?
That is correct. We're gonna start on the Northern Drive and West Dorsey, and we are doing the site work. And I think we spoke about this last time, but the hotel won't close on the lot until several things happen. We gotta deliver the utilities, and we gotta have the DOT, you know, access approved.
Also, Mr. Westermeyer basically said that he will not issue a building permit until there's adequate, there's a way for it to be sewed.
Right.
So they have to start on the WWTF first.
And fire access.
But you're gonna have a haul road, I mean, or you could have, you could have a haul road because you're gonna bring the water line through, from the north, from the north area, kinda by where your access is down to the south. So, I mean, you could just use the northern access and...
We were talking about that today.
That's what I was thinking.
But the reality is...
I just don't want you to box yourself in.
The hotel developer is not gonna close until he has live utilities and the DOT has issued their final approval.
We haven't even talked about that.
You know, maybe that, you know, can change, but nothing substantial construction-wise is gonna happen until we get the DOT final approval.
Do you guys still have questions about this resolution?
No, I don't have a problem, I mean, you know, the resolution that we have as far as issuing the building permits on the perm 33s are fine, but then there's this other one about, and be it further resolved, that a fourth condition is added under the fifth resolve clause regarding conditions for a certificate of occupancy to read as follows. And I don't understand that one at all. Received by the zoning administrator a highway work permit for the Route 9 entrance drive...
That should probably be the permanent, what's the one that's not the perm 33? What is it?
Well, DOT issues a highway work permit, that's what you told me.
Just a highway work permit.
Yeah, yeah. HWP.
But by the time we're at the certificate of occupancy phase...
Well, it's been done.
By the time we're at the certificate of occupancy phase, you would've already had your highway work permit.
Maybe not, because they get to build under a perm 33.
Yeah, but to get, yeah, but...
Well, that's... First of all, could I...
But the issue, but the issue like the CO, all the highway improvements have to be done, right? Like the widening has to be done.
Yeah, it has to be done.
Everything has to be done, so, well, I guess I don't, I don't really understand what this like does.
Could I just clarify that the language in this paragraph four was the town's language? It wasn't our language.
Well, that's a heck of a thing, isn't it?
The only thing that we, the only thing that we suggested adding was changing the word "base course" to "binder course."
Well, I didn't, well, I obviously did not come up with this.
Pete didn't look this. So I think the binder course should come out because it does need to be complete to the end, but the idea here was that if you can do all your work under the perm 33, we needed just a way to have a checklist that, yes, you finally did get your highway work permit.
All right, I mean, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's...
So that was just supposed to be, you know, show us that you actually did get that, plus you finished your roads. I mean, it's almost superfluous at that point.
Right, exactly, right, that's what I'm saying, right, that's what I'm saying.
Can it be written so that it's clear that that's what it's for?
I mean, do we even...
Because, I mean, just saying that if you're not sitting there, if someone else was trying to read that, it may not be clear that this is a checklist item that...
I mean, do we even need it?
It's almost understood that. You can't...
I mean, the certificate of occupancy, I mean, we're not gonna issue like Don and Tad, and they're gonna get me involved. I mean, we're not gonna issue them until we have like sign-offs from, you know, the DOT that the work was done in accordance with the approved plans, Health Department, Water and Wastewater Authority.
But that's because the resolutions always tell you to have those sign-offs.
Well, that's, no, that's just, that's just Tad and Don's protocol.
And DOT, they won't allow you to issue a CO until they approve their roads.
I mean, I have to admit, I understood the section there. I knew what they were saying, because, it's all because this, my first question initially, and I called DOT, was I thought the temporary work permit was just to construct the entrance. I didn't realize you could do other things.
No, you can do everything off that.
Once I got that, then I understood why Victoria did it, because it means that they could actually build the hotel, as you say, it was still just a temporary until they, if there's some delay before you get your final highway work permit, and the highway work permit would then allow everything else that would have to be done.
Exactly, right.
Which means the hotel would be sitting there ready to go, but you couldn't get a CO or anything else because you wouldn't have finished. So we know that that could be a problem down the line that we hope won't occur, that DOT will make everything actually work smoothly, so...
I mean, this is okay if you just wanna make sure that you have the work permit in the file. I mean, that's okay. I mean, I would go take out...
We're gonna take out through the binder course.
Yeah, because it's gotta be 100%...
Yes.
Yeah.
If you make, if you make the change there...
The binder course, right.
And completion of the entrance drives period.
Right, the entrance drives going all the way up.
And just take out, and just, and just take out...
Drives period? You're taking out the whole rest of the sentence.
Yeah, I mean, why, I mean, it's gotta be done 100%.
Yep.
Yeah, we're talking CO.
That's fine.
Okay.
Entrance drives period, that's fine, right?
Yeah.
Here, here.
If you're satisfied with the resolution, I'll read it into the record. I'm moving.
No.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, I actually followed that.
We're just moving...
It makes sense.
Yeah, we're, it's hard to see without the original resolution in front of you.
I understand what it's doing, and I understand that it needs to be done.
Why it's doing, yes.
Okay. Resolution 2017-04F, resolution to amend the conditions of site plan approval of the Enid Bellafield, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that a new second resolve clause is inserted after item 20 of the initial resolve clause as follows: "And be it further resolved that work under the stormwater pollution prevention plan shall include site preparation work predicated to building permit including earthwork, grading, stormwater erosion control, environmental control improvements and maintenance, and private road improvements shown on the site plan. And be it further resolved, the condition three under the fourth resolve clause, which required, quote, receipt by the zoning administrator of the highway work permit plans for the realignment of the Route 9 entrance drive as approved by NYSDOT, close quote, is hereby deleted and replaced with a new condition three. A building permit for the wastewater treatment plant may be issued upon receipt by the zoning administrator of an NYSDOT perm 33 for temporary construction access for the northerly Route 9 entrance drive. A building permit for the hotel may be issued upon receipt by the zoning administrator of an NYSDOT perm 33 for temporary construction access for the southerly Route 9 entrance. Be it further resolved that a fourth condition is added under the fifth resolve clause regarding conditions for a certificate of occupancy to read as follows: For receipt by the zoning administrator of a highway work permit for the Route 9 entrance drives from the NYSDOT and completion of the entrance drives in accordance with the approved road profiles as may be amended by the town and planning board as part of the subdivision approval."
Second.
Was that an AOK?
It's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. See, it was worth staying late at night.
That was gonna be really awful if you denied us everything.
We're not, we're putting it down now!
That's why I thought you'd kick this in the back.
No, it's that, so what happened was is that, again, when the rewriting started, I'm like, wait a minute, this is too complicated, and I already knew because of today that we were having so many issues with the resolutions, I thought, I don't wanna do another one.
If we're gonna have 6:00 meeting, we need a cutoff time for sharing emails and revising resolutions.
Yeah, I agree. So at any rate, thank you guys for staying late.
Thank you so much.
Have a happy 4th of July, as always.
Thank you.
And we won't see you again for a while on this.
We'll see you.
Oh, well, we got everything done today.
You got your subdivision approval?
No, I know, it's just like a...
Your ODA?
Yeah, we'll be working a lot with Victoria and getting the documents and getting the things worked out, and I have, just always have a feeling we might need a daytime meeting.
You never know, right?
To solve some issues about this, but we're hoping to really get in the ground very soon.
If we could just take a one...
We could catch up on all the old ones.
We are not going to be taking any new applications. One more time, let me state this for the record. We will not be taking, no, wait, this is serious. We're not taking any new applications unless they've been reviewed, Ms. Whitman, by the zoning administrator, or Ms. Axelston for completeness, administrative completeness. Is that understood by everyone, all here?
Everybody say yes.
Yes.
If Tad does not perform a checklist in advance, then Ms. Axelston will be the one who'll have to do it through escrow, because we are not going to get applications anymore. After six months, we're then saying, "We need new information." That's not gonna happen. That information should've been added at the beginning, they should've been told, sorry, I'm on my high horse. They should've been told at the outset, because if, again, if the purpose is to decrease delay at the outset, then it just delays later on, and I don't want that happening. It gives the board and the town a bad reputation. Sorry I had to listen to that. Any other business?
No.
Motion to adjourn. Yes?
I would like to interject. Are you, Victoria said you do need to make a motion if you're gonna change the time, so you discussed it, but no one actually made a motion and voted on changing the time to August 1st.
Don't we need a date, though? Then we're, I thought we were gonna kinda...
But August 1st?
August, August 1st is the August 1st meeting.
What were you still thinking?
Oh.
Was it kinda...
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion?
And I second it.
That we change that to 6:00 on August 1st?
All meeting times, starting...
Yes, yes.
All regular meeting times.
Yes.
Starting on the August 1st meeting to 6:00 PM.
And that was seconded by Chris? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now being a motion to adjourn.
And then can you also authorize Michael to amend the bylaws and send them to the town board?
I would like to make a motion to allow Michael to amend the bylaws to incorporate the change of meeting times.
And send them to the town board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Wait.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Video Ventures. Thank you, guys.
I said after 10:00 we don't fully function.
I know.
Thank you very much.